Stacy, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Budge. I will go back to council.
Linda, you're on mute if you're talking. Oh no, she dropped.
Yes.
She's on here.
Okay, we'll go back to Linda in a minute. Um, councilmember Terry?
Here.
Councilmember Pulapatti?
Here.
Oh, look at that, first time for that.
Vice Mayor Gatewood?
Here.
Thank you. Mayor Sander?
Here.
I know, um, councilmember Budge was there and, um, I don't see her there anymore, but, uh, I can see that she just rejoined. Let's give her a moment. Um, to have her get back on the screen. There she is. Councilmember Budge, are you here? We need you to unmute.
You're on mute.
It's silent.
I'm here.
Thank you.
In your excitement to say you were here, we lost you. Alright, uh, very good. Can we carry on with item number six in the Metro Cable TV television announcement, please, Madam Clerk?
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable fourteen, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air on Thursday, December tenth at nine AM and Thursday, December seventeenth at seven PM. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch. A copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department and a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within forty-eight hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Alright, very good. We are going to follow that with the pledge of allegiance and invocation. Do we have Jennifer Larrett with us?
Uh, I have not.
Or an invocation?
I haven't seen her join Zoom and I don't see her here in the council chambers.
Okay, let's give her a minute to raise a hand if she's out there. No sign?
Nope.
Okay, we will do a pledge of allegiance and let's see. Garrett, you're in that position on my screen. So if you would lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Now, my apologies to everyone in advance. This is awkward. Linda has a flag. We do our best to respect the flag and do the pledge in the somewhat awkward circumstance. It won't sound so great, but we all know what we're, what we mean and what we're here for. So Garrett, take it away.
And Luke, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, and rather than invocation, please join me in a, uh, moment of silence. Um, with some contemplation on challenges and, uh, thoughts of Thanksgiving. Alright, thank you very much. Those were items seven and eight. We are going to go on to item number nine, presentations, of which there are none. That will be followed by a public comment. So, we have a variety of ways to make public comment. You can be in the council chamber as per the usual old situation. That occasionally occurs now. You can also, uh, call a number that's available on our agenda. Or you can join us here on Zoom and wave your hand, raise your hand through the software. Uh, that will get our city clerk's attention. You're able to make a comment there. So, citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker card or one of those other mentioned means I just mentioned. For items on the agenda, you will be called up for your comments at the point on the agenda when we take up that item. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments to three minutes or less to state their name and community residence. And of course, under the provisions of the California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. Alright, do we have any public comments, Stacy?
I have three public comment cards. The first one I received from Anil. Um, after the special meeting ended. I don't see him in the council chambers and I don't see him on Zoom. So, Anil, if you're out there, feel free to raise your hand. Uh, but I'm going to move on to Darryl Langwell and following Darryl will be Helen. And you'll have three minutes.
Darryl, we just saw you.
Yeah, I hung around. On this date.
Go right ahead.
On this date, nineteen forty-one, the United States joined the greatest conflict in the history of man. On, soon after that, thousands of young men volunteered and enlisted in our military service. Today, there are very few of those individuals still alive. Those young men, and believe me, wars are fought by young men. Those young men sacrificed, many of them with their lives, to help us preserve the, the quality of life that we have in this country. And I'm afraid that there are a great many in our younger generations that don't quite understand what those young men and women also did to preserve this country's freedoms and everything. And I would just hope that those of us that are able to remember some of what went on can make sure that our younger generations continue to realize the sacrifices that were made both on the battlefield and at home here in the United States because the people had to give up many of what they thought were luxuries at the time, sugar, gasoline, and that sort of stuff to, to support the war effort. And I just hope that our younger generations will realize the sacrifices and it will be remembered for the rest of time. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, Darryl. On Pearl Harbor Day, that was an extremely appropriate comment and I just want to thank you for that. Next comment, Stacy, do we have any more?
We do.
Helen, I think?
Helen is here.
And you can stay, Dave.
Oh, okay, good. That was the question.
Helen has, um, a slide, well, I should say an image to share, but we're having some technology, um, difficulties at the moment.
Oh, there she is.
I'm not sure that they'll be able to see from there. Um, okay, Persephone just needs a moment to.
We have that lovely camera on the podium, but that is problematic, I'm guessing?
Yes, we scanned in the image. Um, I just emailed it to Persephone. She's going to pull it up on the screen.
Alright, okay, let's do that. She went to enough trouble to bring us something, we should be able to view it.
So, um, just.
I just think it's shared with the rest of us.
Yes. Okay, Helen.
Alright, Helen.
Okay, hi. Thank you for letting me take three minutes and, uh, congratulations to our newest council member. Uh, I'm here tonight to talk about, uh, preservation of history in Rancho Cordova and providing opportunities for our youth to understand where we came from. So for short, the history. What you see up on the monitor is a thirty-foot easement that the people were awarded as irrevocable in nineteen seventy-three. That easement also is the center focus of two national trails. One being the California Trail, which is the immigrant trail that started in Missouri, came across, actually, the wagon trains went across that easement. Second, uh, national event was the Pony Express. The Pony Express ran across that. I have verified and have been told by the national people that all I have to do is order the signs. And to do this, we need Rancho Cordova to step up to the plate. We notified Rancho Cordova in about September and October about infringement on a easement that was granted to the people in nineteen seventy-three. Again, that easement was, uh, verified again in nineteen eighty-seven when we got a, uh, another easement. But what we need is that easement open. The family has elected to block easement with fences, so we can't cross it. Um, I think it's very historical because off that same easement, there is, uh, remains of a almost four thousand year old traveler and six Native Americans that are, uh, almost three thousand years old. So, off of that easement, we can track history for four thousand years. No other community that I know of can say, I can track history for four thousand years and I have two national trails that go across it. Think of the learning our children will get being able to walk across the path that the wagon trains came in with people from all ethnic backgrounds came across that. Think about the Pony Express. The only reason why the Pony Express was, uh, didn't last any longer was because the telegraph came out. But it's still historical relevance that touches that trail. So I'm here today to remind a lot of our, uh, council people who have talked about adding opportunities for the children. This is the best historical, uh, learning thing you can do for children. Let them walk on the paths where the ponies and wagon trains came. And also, this has historical significance because the founder, the person that got the treaty, was a black man with, um, his background was Jewish. So where else can you hit a trail that has so much historical and ethnic, yeah, ethnicity background in it? So I am hoping that Rancho Cordova stands behind what they say. Um, we, uh, want our children to have a better life. We want our children to have historical significance and support us and have the owners take their fence down so the people have, can cross that easement, uh, and enjoy the views that they're seeing. So that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Helen. Um, I saw an email, I think over the weekend by, uh, Larry Ladd. He had found a map, uh, was it in the Bancroft Library at Cal? No, I think it was in the Stanford Library. And it, um, Linda, you might be interested in this. It was from eighteen fifty-one, I think. And it showed the course of the railroad, uh, running basically through Rancho Cordova, which of course wasn't, wasn't called Rancho Cordova then. And it also showed the road that did not actually parallel the tracks, but rather sort of stuck by the side of the river. Um, so it's a very interesting little map. It's by, um, oh shoot, I just forgot his name. The engineer who engineered the railroad, um. Oh gosh, Elijah.
Theodore Judah.
Theodore Judah, Theodore Judah, sorry.
I saw the map, David.
Oh, you did see it? Good. Alright, uh, any other public comment?
There is no other public comment in the room and I do not see any public comment on Zoom or by phone.
Alright, very good. Well, thank you guys for your public comments. We appreciate that. We are going to move on to council member reports. And first up would be Siri, if she had anything she wants to report with regard to council business. If you want to pass, you can do so, but, um, it is your turn.
A report that I'm very happy to be here on city council and to be working with all of you and for the city.
Alright, very good. Uh, Linda, go right ahead.
Thank you, David. Um, yes, like everybody else, I'm sure we enjoyed a very quiet, very secluded Thanksgiving. Um, but, um, I can tell you that Albert and I met with, um, Henry Lee at Regional Transit and one of the senior staff. And, um, curiously, Henry has really, when Henry came, came here from Florida, he was, he was a budget manager. He was truly the financial whiz at the, um, organization that he came from. And he came to Sacramento to be the financial manager at Regional Transit before he was, uh, appointed as general manager. And he really has turned RT's, uh, finances, financial picture around. Um, the reserve is up from almost zero four years ago. And I think it was seventeen million last year, but now the reserve is at thirty million. Part of it has to do with CARES Act money. Part of it has to do with the fact that they've just gotten a grant from the California Transportation Commission. Um, the, the CARES Act money gives them the budget, uh, uh, the amount in their budget necessary to, uh, meet expenses for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two. And, um, it really puts RT in a unique position, um, in, 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 in the whole United States, actually, because many other comparable, um, regional transit systems are cutting staff. And, uh, RT, um, is right-sized. They are not cutting staff and they are able to, using these grants, they are able to, um, um, to provide the services like the Smart Ride and, um, again, which, which is a grant and we hope that will, that will, uh, continue. But, um, the other interesting thing is that SMUD actually has a plan to add electric vehicle chargers all over the county. And I have asked Cyrus to put an item on the agenda. Um, if you'll remember, to add, um, electric chargers to, uh, gas stations to make them true fueling centers, which is what they're euphemistically called in the planning world. And, um, and so it seems that SMUD could be a willing partner in that effort. So that's my report. Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. Next up, Donald.
Oh, these wreaths with the holidays, there wasn't a whole lot going on. I think I've got three or four two-by-twos in the next couple of days or, or in the next week or two. Um, David and I participated in, uh, a planning session with staff on the, uh, National League of Cities, uh, post-secondary education basic needs initiative that the city is working on. Uh, David and I have been the, the working group of that for the last, I don't know, month or two. Um, it's coming along. I think it's, it's, it's some fascinating work to look at the kinds of resources that I think we've been able to, to, to do. Um, especially, we're going to get into a point where we're going to start learning from the other cities and kind of what they were doing. As the smallest city, but I also think making arguably the largest impact when it comes to post-secondary education students, um, at a scale of like per capita of what we can do for the amount of money that we're spending in the promised program. Um, so that, that seems like some really interesting work that could fill various fruits in the coming year. Uh, like I said, we have a two-by-two tomorrow with SacCity Unified. I hope we reunify this on Thursday. Um, I don't know if I can invite you all to this, but I would bring it up and then if anyone's interested, let me know and I can, I, I'm pretty sure that I can. Um, the American River Conservancy is, uh, hosting an American River Parkway virtual tour on Friday, I believe, Friday morning. Um, it was supposed to be a bus tour at one point and they were going to somehow socially distance us all and that plan didn't really come, uh, it's at one o'clock on Friday. Um, and so now they're going to do this virtual tour. Um, I think mainly to highlight different projects that may get funded or have been funded or, and then go over the master plan and a bunch of other stuff. So if anyone wants to, to, you know me and I can, it's, I'm assuming nobody else got invited to that because I'm the member for the. Um, and then finally, the Air District didn't meet this month. Um, but I, I think I was sending out these emails at least early last month. We are now, we've gone from all of our forest fires to check before you burn. So now, if you want to turn on your fireplace or backyard barbecue and burning wood smoke, you need to check the website, checkbeforeyouburn.org, uh, to make sure that you're allowed to do that on that day. Good for me.
Very good. Garrett?
Alright, um, let's go. Uh, I met with, uh, I had a, a fun meeting with the county and, uh, and the county supervisors. That seemed to go well. I'm sure we're going to bring a couple of things, Dave and I are throwing things at, um, to discuss. Uh, that was, uh, harsh and, uh, and I, I just think they're going in the wrong direction. And then on the fun note, we did a PSA for the Rancho Chamber. Thank Diane and all of the team to make us, uh, look halfway decent and geeked out, so that was good. And then congratulations to my, uh, newest council member, Siri. Uh, great to see you on council. Look at you with your cool background and stuff, making me look bad at the tech guy. And that's it. That's all I got.
Alright, very good. Well, my family also enjoyed a very quiet and very small Thanksgiving. Record, uh, quiet, record small. It was an odd holiday for me. Um, but outside of that, there was a lot of, um, city business, mayoral kind of stuff going on. The, uh, Zach's opening, I hope you guys have been to Zach's Bar and Grill, uh, at least virtually because they deliver and it's really good. They, uh, have opened up in that, that perennial restaurant location that everyone sort of, um, sort of notices all the time, right there, Highway fifty in Zinfandel. It's kind of a beautiful space actually for a restaurant. Maybe a little challenging to drive to and park, but it's, you know, kind of prominent in the community. So Zach's has been planning to open all year and unfortunately COVID came along and nearly derailed them, but they've got guts and it's a nice family operation. They've opened up. Food is good. We've had it delivered several times. And I was actually there briefly to, uh, watch them actually snip a ribbon. So that was, it was nice to actually see a ribbon cutting. I think this entire year, we've only done maybe two or three ribbon cuttings compared to whatever the normal pace would be. Um, so it was kind of, it felt odd and unusual to me to actually be at a ribbon cutting. We had a, um, actually maybe I'll save that for last.
Hey, um, David, I also wanted to say on Zach's, um, I, I know, uh, he's very generous to the community. When I was in the leadership class, they actually donated, I think fifteen thousand dollars towards, uh, the community of Rancho Cordova. So, um, it's a great place to visit and I'm sure the owner's a great guy as well. I, I still have to go, so, so I might rather to go.
Yeah, check it out. The, uh, National League of Cities met right after our last meeting. I think that actually started before our last city council meeting. And I must have attended, I don't know, a couple of dozen of different either meetings or sessions associated with that. This whole remote virtual meeting thing is getting a little better in some ways. There are certainly advantages. You know, when you've got three sessions all stacked up at the same time, if you're at the meeting, you'd have to pick one. Now you can view all three. It's not a problem. So I, I have took full advantage of the, of the NLC, um, and the offerings they had. Specifically, uh, my role this coming year there, I'm vice chair of the advisory council. That's sort of the job of, you've been on the board, um, and you've got some seniority in the organization. So there's this advisory council. I'm vice chair of that advisory council. I have been reappointed to the board of directors because I'm chairing their policy committee on transportation, which will have a lot of work this coming year with, uh, significant transportation legislation in front of us. And, uh, along with that, I have also been appointed to the executive committee of the organization. That's actually the governing body. The board is a, a large board, maybe sixty-five members, now I'm not quite sure. The executive committee is more like six elected officials who make the day-to-day kind of decisions about where the organization is headed. So as I step down as mayor, uh, here in a meeting or so, I will be stepping up and having that responsibility at the NLC as part of their executive committee. So that's kind of, kind of exciting. I'm also on the League of California Cities, but now bored, but now we've got to rebrand ourselves because League of California Cities didn't quite have the punch we wanted. It was too hard to say. And so the geniuses in media have come up with the notion of calling us Cal Cities. Cal Cities. So rather than talk about the league and go confused about what the league is and what league are we talking about, the league, the league? Cal Cities. So from now on, we got to talk about Cal Cities efforts. Oh, I know, it's so wonderful. But it might actually work, who knows? I'm hopeful. I'm always, always optimistic about these things. Anyway, I'm on that, uh, that board.
You and I are skeptical.
Yeah, I can see it from your faces. If we're in the same room, it'd be really obvious through body language, I'm sure. I'm on that board and we're actually kind of in the middle of our priority setting retreat. It resumes again tomorrow morning. So when we have priorities, you know, everybody, all the elected officials will be, I'm sorry, in Cal Cities will be emailed what the, uh, what the board designated as priorities for the year.
Isn't that the name of their magazine?
The magazine actually is not going to be published anymore, except virtually.
Oh geez.
The print.
Was that the name of it? Was it like?
Western City, Western City.
The print version became non-economic. So like so many other print versions of whatever.
Yeah.
Um, now it'll be, be electronic and perhaps, you know, better. I always enjoyed thumbing through it, but we'll, we'll see what they can do with the virtual version.
Well, it seems like your priority number one should be to come up with a decent name.
Okay, uh, Secog, the commercial corridors report that I've spent a year heading that task force will be coming up with a report, uh, this, actually, it must be out. I've seen the final draft. I think we've released it. In any case, I'll be sure that everyone here gets a copy of that. This is a year-long bit of work by some developers and then some elected officials and some staff members from agencies trying to figure out how do we revitalize old commercial corridors, like Folsom Boulevard is a prime example. But in Rancho Cordova, you could also probably talk about Saloma Road, Sunrise, uh, maybe even Zinfandel as old, uh, corridors that are need a revitalization. But Folsom Boulevard is clearly the preeminent one for us. I guess Bradshaw, you can throw that in the list too. That report was designed to sort of highlight and focus and identify some things that further action could be taken on by the region. And at Secog next year, the likely charge we will have, not as a city, but as a, as a group, will be to take on all the little barriers that exist to additional development along those old corridors and the commonality of issue around the region, because every jurisdiction has these old commercial corridors. The commonality of issues often is around public agencies. So it's sewer fees, it's water fees, it's drainage fees, maybe it's school fees, but all the other public agencies that sort of lob themselves into that development process. And through the weight of that and the weight of the outdated infrastructure that's proffered on those old commercial corridors, it's just non-economic to develop there. And so we want to find a way to work together with those agencies and those organizations, many of whom we, we serve on those boards or will. Uh, we've got to work together on them to find ways to stimulate that economic reinvestment in our communities because there are huge assets in these old commercial corridors that we just can't tap. So I'm, I'm excited about that. I think there's good stuff happening there at Secog. And also on, uh, Green Means Go, which is Secog's legislative effort uh, to get some resources out of the state to help us meet that greenhouse gas target that the region signed on to or were kind of forced to sign on to in the last MTP. And Donald probably knows about this, but the, the percent of reduction that they wanted from us from greenhouse gases from a two thousand, oh gosh, what year? I just forgot. Year two thousand base perhaps, is now nineteen percent. We thought that level of reduction over two thousand numbers was non-economic and not possible. So, uh, the state ARB said, oh, don't worry, we'll be there to help you. We'll be there to help you get special funding to help you get over that hump and build things that'll help you, you know, get over that nineteen percent hump. And of course, for two years they haven't, or for a year and a half now, they haven't done anything to help us with that. But we're making progress. So we have hope that the region can serve as a testbed for other non-coastal communities and how you hit these targets set by the ARB. And without sort of economic ability to do so otherwise. GSAC had their annual meeting last week. It was virtual. I don't know if anyone else attended. I think Cyrus and Micah were there at least. Um, very interesting.
David?
Yes.
For Siri's benefit?
GSAC?
How about, how about, uh, no acronyms?
Oh gosh, that's so hard to do. Greater Sacramento Economic Development Corporation.
And ARB?
Uh, Air Resources Board. What's the next quiz, man?
Hey, I said air district when I was talking about money.
You did?
Yeah, you did.
You did.
Thank you, Linda.
That's the county one.
Alright, and, uh, let's see, yeah, we did do a county two-by-two and Garrett will probably be talking about that item a little later tonight. But the difficult thing, I wanted to mention to you guys is the effort and Cyrus might have to, start waving your hands. But the difficult thing I wanted to mention to you guys is the effort and Cyrus might have to, start waving your hands if I'm saying too much, Cyrus, is the, uh, CTC STA, oh, I'm sorry, acronyms, California Transportation Commission, Sacramento Transportation Authority, um, matters of, uh, last, last couple of weeks. So we put on a big lobbying effort to try to get White Rock Road recognized by the CTC as a project under a special local partnership program, the LPP program that they have. And this was kind of a full court press. We had our state senators, we had Assemblyman Cooley, we had, uh, county folks, we had private sector folks, we had UC Davis, we had health systems, an enormous number actually for a project like this. So people saying, hey, pay attention to this project, pay attention to this project. We lobbied commissioners, we lobbied members of legislature who serve on the commission. Everything was met with an awfully positive response. Staff thought we had a great application in that White Rock Road project because it serves the largest private sector job base in Northern California. It's parallel capacity to Highway fifty. It's a way overused road. I mean, everything points in, in our favor. We already started it. All the hurdles are cleared. There's no more environmental or any other barriers to doing it. This is literally shovel-ready. And everything we thought was headed the right way. And then CTC staff apparently wavered a little on what to recommend, what to recommend, and came down with the idea that, well, STA Sacramento Transportation Authority ranked three projects and this one was ranked third. So we're not going to put it as our top recommendation, even if the numbers were better for it, even if the community support was better for it, even if the, you know, every other measure was in favor, we're not going to do that because of how STA ranked them. And the way STA ranked them was, number one, project that they put forward from STA was, let's build, uh, a loop, a double, uh, double-track loop downtown, part of the, I guess it's a green line, isn't it, right? The green line downtown. But that project is undefined, not engineered, has no environmental done, no right-of-way analysis. I mean, if you do that in ten years, it'd be a miracle. But STA put that as project number one. That's their top.
That project doesn't exist.
Exactly.
There is no such project. That was part of the-
Mine.
Yeah, that was part of the, um, streetcar project that didn't go anywhere and is now going to run from nowhere to nowhere.
Yeah. So Garrett knows about this. I'm not telling him anything of these statements. But, um, so that was number one. And that one actually didn't really pass CTC muster. I don't think they thought that counted as a project. But it certainly, I mean, all these economic times of COVID, it was, it's, you know, that was kind of crazy for STA to put that forward. So the number two project they ranked is a county project, which might have a lot of merit. It's a South White Watt, um, modernization. It's a big project, but they still have to do engineering and right-of-way and environmental. It is probably a twenty-twenty-four kind of a project. It's three, four, could be five or six years out there before it's done. And I will say the county has a way of saying, oh, we're going to do it this year. And then it takes a few more years before they actually get to it. So that is what STA ranked number two, something that maybe we can get to in four or five years. And ours was ranked number three. And so what did the CTC do? They funded project number two, they discarded number one because that wasn't really a project. And everybody's pointing to ours saying, well, this is the best project, but not funded because of STA. And we all know what happened at STA. The city of Sacramento got all their votes together. County of Sacramento got all their votes together. They rammed the first two projects. So I'm, correct me if I'm wrong here, Garrett, you might have something to add. And then ours, by merits, showed up third, but oh, out of the mud. So as a region, my point is, as a region, we just really screwed up. We just shot ourselves in the foot. Here you got a shot to get probably two projects, but certainly one underway right now, and we blew it. So we got to think hard. And I know there's real friction. I'm the Secog side of this equation. There's real friction in a way between Secog and STA because Secog gets all ranked. It's like, where do you apply the metrics? Score it. And he goes to STA and it's like, oh, who's got the votes? Where are the politics? Is that an accurate depiction, Garrett?
Yeah, lost. I, I mean, like in all honesty, I lost. I, I did what I could to try to bring together the votes, but I couldn't, I can't beat out Sac County and I can't beat out, um, uh, City Sacramento, no matter what crazy idea bill they have because of how many members they have on that council. And they were able to buy more votes and basically beat me out. I mean, I was lucky to get third, honestly. I, I got most of the smaller cities involved, Citrus Heights, Elk Grove, um, uh, what's that one out in the middle of nowhere? Um,
Gault?
Uh, yeah, Gault and then the, the other one. And I had all those lined up and I had enough votes for that. But I couldn't get anyone to give me the three I needed to basically beat Sacramento because Sacramento's going to have their votes regardless. And so is Sac County. And their projects are never anything that is reasonable or anything that's ready to go. And that's one of those things like playing politics. We're just going to have to get better at as a group. Like when we send someone there, you know, we're going to have to use the guy that, you know, hopefully is the godstone of someone on the county. Um, you know, that to basically make sure that we can get that bill passed next time. Because we have a chance to get money. I mean, we were really close. Like maybe we beat out a ton of other projects. Elk Grove was ticked because they thought they had more votes than us. But, I mean, we were like right there, like three votes away. So it's really awesome.
There's some changes on the Sacramento City Council, Garrett, and new attitudes may bring different results.
Yeah, I would say though that all, one of the ones that-
Not much consolation right now, but next year.
And, and mo- most of those new members, I don't think are going to take a, a keen interest into infrastructure projects. Um, I think what we need to probably add to, to next year's, um, strategy sessions at some point, you know, we, we've always had, you know, um, oh, uh, Simon and Company represented us on the federal level. We added state in the last few years. Um, it's probably high time to start talking about if we need to, if we need some sort of strategist, lobbyist at the local level to deal with regional projects like this. Um, and go out for an RFE and see if there's somebody that, that we could have. Because Garrett, I mean, I, I don't, the air district doesn't work that way. And I've never sort of-
Almost nothing does, right? That's the challenge.
Yeah, right. And, and it just seems like, like, I, and I can't remember who was on STA before me, it was Bob, but, um, you know, what was it? A few years ago, like your first meeting or second meeting where they just said, yeah, we've got like twelve million that you guys like decide how to spend it. And it was like that meeting, you guys just had to divvy it up. It just doesn't happen like that. I mean, we kind of do that as a conservancy. I just think we, we should really start to think about if we want a budget for someone beyond staff that's, that, that does this. Because I know there are a few cities that, that have paid representation outside of regular staff to help with it. And-
I, I think, I, I don't know. It was worth it. Like it was ten million plus that we could have probably got or something like that if we had just played politics. And this is also going into, we're getting ready to decide who goes where and what's on, on what commission. We need to really think about like, who's in the commission? What are we trying to get out of the commission? Because there's no way your, your youngest, uh, council member should have been at the meeting where you had to play politics. I didn't have the relationship back then and hadn't burned all the bridges, you know? So for someone that's of a, a, a lobbyist that works with someone maybe like, maybe you or, you know, or David that has friends on, we should count it. We should count votes because that, if I had got three more votes, which is probably Eric Guerra, Steve Hanson, he voted for us, but he put us at third, and then there's one other, we would have been right there.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, it's this logic.
Well, and we're, we're gonna-
Through, through the mayor's campaign.
Appointments anyways.
I, uh-
There, there's something to maybe add to Maria's government relations team is consideration of, of a firm to help us with things like this when it comes to getting at these resources.
Through, through the mayor, I, I, I hear the, I hear a brief report from a council member transitioning into a, a bit of a conversation among the council. Is this something that you'd, you'd like to bring back in some form or another?
I think-
I, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm-
The appointment process, that probably is, you know, we talked about a relationship to various agencies. That's probably the appropriate time.
Yeah.
Do you have any suggestions, Cyrus?
I'm trying to suggest a discussion item for a later date.
Thank you.
All right. That's it for my report. There are no other questions. Cyrus, you can now correct me on all the errors I made if any.
No, I think one, uh, one clarification I would like to make is, uh, that for the White Rock Road project, we did have the help and assistance of a, of a local, uh, firm to, uh, with the lobbying and the work that we needed to do. So I think, uh, as has been pointed out, there's, uh, a, a great deal of, uh, politics that goes into those decisions. And that is definitely an issue that, uh, we need to deal with. Uh, but I do want to acknowledge, uh, Mayor, your work on, uh, and the last minute work that we had to do in connecting with the commissioners. I would also like to specifically acknowledge Assemblyman Cooley, uh, over the Thanksgiving holiday. He was exchanging messages and, uh, uh, with the commissioners and with other, uh, staff, uh, other elected officials, uh, related to the support for the project. So, uh, that needs to be acknowledged. The only other thing I need to add is,
and I got a, I got a really, I got copied on a really nice letter that Senator Jim Nielsen sent.
Yes, we, we had widespread support for the project at, um, just about every level. And, uh, but this despite, you know, despite all the evidence and all the good work that staff had also done, you know, Albert and his team did a great job to put a great application together. But this, uh, unfortunately, CTC chose that, uh, the top two projects that were selected by STA board. Uh, the only other thing I would like to add is, um, that we did have a meeting with Sacramento Fire two by two and Station sixty-eight, which would be the new fire station in Montana has, uh, the funding has been secured. Uh, they're in the final stages of the design and planning. And, uh, we expect for that project to go into construction fairly soon. So we probably have a groundbreaking in, uh, twenty-twenty-one, early twenty-twenty-one.
And I apologize again for not meeting, being in that meeting, but, um, did they show you any, um, potential designs?
Yes, it's, uh,
Is there in final?
The design is available and, uh, we'll be happy to share that with the council.
Great. That's important.
Great. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much, Cyrus. We are moving on to item number thirteen, Consent Calendar Items. Consent calendar items consists of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item. For individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. And we do need to pull item thirteen point six for a minor correction or modification. So, uh, do I have a motion to approve items thirteen point one through thirteen point five?
So moved.
I have a question on thirteen dot five.
Okay, let's pull that item for separate consideration. Do we have a motion for thirteen point one through thirteen point four?
So moved again.
Second.
Second.
All right, roll call please.
Who was the second? Was that Councilmember Terry?
Terry.
Thank you. Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Terry?
Hi.
Councilmember Pulopati?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gatewood?
Yep.
Mayor Sander?
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a minor correction to item thirteen point six. And Kim, I think you're here to talk about that.
Yes, thank you. Uh, Mayor Council, Kim Duran, Administrative Services Director. And this evening, uh, the treasurer's report had in, uh, there was an investment that had an extra zero added on the par value, which misstated the chart on page one of the staff report. So that has been corrected on the version that you received this evening to the correct value. Everything else in the report remains as is because it's reporting on market value.
All right. Any questions on that from council?
Move approval of thirteen point six.
Is there a second?
Second.
By Terry, roll call please.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Terry?
Hi.
Councilmember Pulopati?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gatewood?
Yes.
Mayor Sander?
Hi.
Thank you.
And that leaves thirteen point five, thirteen point five. Siri, do you have a comment about that one or a question?
Yes, um, so this grant, um, so the report out is going to be per the staff report in a year. And I was requesting if we could get a, uh, report out in six months to see how that grant is working.
Okay, do we have?
What's the length of the contract for? Is it twelve month?
It looks, yes.
I think it's an annual.
Yeah, it's an annual grant.
That I think we get just, do we, Cyrus, do we get this just about every year?
Yes, it's, uh, it's fairly routine.
Yeah. And, and I'd like to see how that, um, money's working towards getting that improvement in six months. Just a status report.
Okay. It's a twenty thousand dollar item. My understanding Cyrus is this is used for special sort of operations or stings, that sort of thing?
Yes, it's-
Oh, it's the shoulder tapping money.
Yeah. Shoulder taps, if I would refer to it.
Outreach, education.
I don't think there'd be any difficulty reporting halfway through the year, but there's no guarantee we've actually consumed it or done something under the ground by then, right? Given the small-
Yeah, something, something that small, I mean, they'll spend twenty thousand like in a couple of weekends. So getting the kids together so that they can, I mean, I don't even know how you do this safely right now. Because you'd have to get kids to go tap people on the shoulder to try to get them to buy you beer and then catch the people in the liquor stores. Um, what might be a good thing is that within the next six months, we're going to have the, uh, the police chief give a update on public safety. I think maybe the request is to include an outcome or activities related to this grant by then.
Yep.
Siri, do you think that would meet your needs? That's a, it's a-
Yeah, because I, I just want to see how, you know, if they're using the money to see what the status report is. And if whenever they use it in six months, they say, I've used, you know, nothing, then that's what it is. If they have. And just an, uh, update would be great.
Okay.
Yeah, we tended to get this every couple of years. They come and they bring the kids to participate in whatever nonprofit they were working with to do it. Um, I wouldn't even say it's annual. I mean, we make it a funny annual, but they include it and kind of talk it up every once in a while.
Yeah.
Like what they did, how many people they caught, you know, how many tickets they wrote, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, absolutely. That's what I'd like to see, you know?
Yeah.
Okay, Cyrus, why don't we make a note of that for, um, Chief Adams? When she comes and makes the report, presumably would be around six months or within six months, she can address this item specifically. If that's, uh, amenable to you, Siri.
Yes, please.
Okay, let's do it that way. Uh, in that case, I'm for a motion. Is there another question?
Item thirteen point five with that small modification.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Oh, I heard Garrett. Very good. Roll call please.
Councilmember Pulopati?
Yes.
Councilmember Terry?
Hi.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gatewood?
Yes.
Mayor Sander?
Hi. All right, we are moving on to item number fourteen. Consent public hearing items. Consent public hearing items consists of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. I am going to open the public hearing and ask the city clerk if we have any speaker cards on these items.
We do not.
These are items fourteen point one to fourteen point four. Anybody online wishes to make a comment, please raise your hand at this time. Fourteen point one through fourteen point four. Seeing no hands, I'm going to close the public hearing and seek a motion for approval.
I will move approval of items fourteen point one to fourteen point four with the, um, editorial comment that, uh, nobody probably wants to vote for fourteen point four, uh, fourteen point two, but it looks like we don't have a choice.
Yeah, fourteen point two is a, is a unique one and the state law has made it more unique. Um, it does have wide law enforcement support. Interesting thing to me when we brought it up a while ago. We actually brought it up as a city before the state undertook that action.
Yeah.
And see, that's where when thirteen point four would actually come in to help. But, yeah, it was thirteen point five.
All right. So we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Terry. Roll call please.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Terry?
Hi.
Councilmember Pulopati?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gatewood?
Yes.
Mayor Sander?
Hi.
Okay, that brings us to item number fifteen, public hearing items of which there are none. Next up is item sixteen, regular calendar items. And we will go on to item sixteen point one. It's a discussion regarding COVID-nineteen enforcement and the county of Sacramento ordinance about enforcement. So I think we'll probably have a staff discussion to kick off of this. And Micah, is this you?
It is, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Mayor Council, Micah Runner, Deputy City Manager. Just a brief update and background on this item. On November seventeenth, the Board of Supervisors placed on the agenda an urgency ordinance proposing penalties for health order violations. Interest was expressed at the city council meeting to discuss this item on the November sixteenth council meeting. It was actually during that meeting that we learned that the, the Board of Supervisors or the county was going to delay the item to discussion on, continue item to discussion on December eighth. So hearing that, we expressed to the council that we could basically add this agenda item to, to tonight's conversation and to have the conversation. Last week, during the week, the county health officials office and county staff various folks with the chambers and business improvement districts to, to present and go over the proposed item that they were presenting. A couple of the key takeaways from those discussions that various staff, both on the, on our enforcement teams, city manager's office, city community's office, all economic development all participated in. Some of the main takeaways from those discussions is the ordinance itself is only meant for those who blatantly disregard the health order. Really to focus on those who are the worst offenders and not being responsive or reactive to any of the education efforts. Education will continue to be the first and, and foremost method used and continue to educate the community on the, on the health order. The county will not pursue conversations or citations or penalties without first discussing it with the jurisdictions of that business or if that person is within the city itself. So they, they communicated that they would extend those conversations with the, with the local jurisdictions when those items came up. The, one of the things in those discussions that we heard from the chamber community, from the business community, was the kind of discrepancy between the fee and the penalty amounts between businesses and between individuals or non-commercial users. There was a feeling that it felt especially harsh on the commercial users with that discrepancy. And so we heard that both from our chamber and from various chambers throughout the community. Generally, those were kind of some of the, the main key takeaways from those discussions. The ordinance itself hasn't changed from the original presentation or item that was put in front of the board for discussion. This is on the agenda for the Board of Supervisors tomorrow. This is really presented as an opportunity for, for the city council to discuss and make any recommendations or communications that they would like staff to present to the county if, if you so wish on this item that's before the board tomorrow. So it's really for, we present it to you for discussion and direction at this time.
All right, I, I just want to preface this discussion by saying we all have a, an enormous responsibility to slow the spread of this virus. It's really important that we support each other by doing things like wearing masks, practicing social distancing, carrying on, you know, in the manner in which we have operated this city and this council in an effort to be as safe as, as we can. If we do that, we have a greater likelihood of returning to a strong economy and normal day-to-day activities. And so whatever discussion we have here right now, I think we can all agree on sort of that context. We all have the same goal and end product in mind. Now Adam, I, I see you're here and I have one sort of immediate question. I was under the impression that the county ordinance could not be applicable to a city jurisdiction within the county and that they were only able to apply that to unincorporated county. But the way Micah just presented it, it would be done at least in consultation with us, but it sounds as if they have the authority. Is that an accurate depiction from your understanding?
My understanding is that they would have the authority with the support of the city to engage in that enforcement activity.
Would.
It would not be a unilateral decision by them to engage in the activity.
So can I ask, I guess this would be more of a process. So let's, okay, let's say it's a restaurant, a restaurant that decides to stay openly their dining room open. What is it, the county health department is notified, somebody calls an eight, a nine hundred number or eight hundred number, whatever it is to get somebody to come out because they see that there's people, you know, drinking in a bar with no masks on. So how would that work? Does the county health department show up and try to cite them or they're calling who in the city? Like, how would that even work?
So typically so far, the, the way that we've approached it is for, those, those calls do come to, to the city for it, we really take a, an, an education approach, so it's.
Well, no, so Mike, Mike, I just, I, I want to make sure that you're answering the question I'm asking. Let's say the county adopts a ten thousand dollar fine for the, I don't know, is that the first fine? And then if they keep flaunting them, then it's a hundred thousand, I have no idea. But let's say we have somebody that's, that's being very reckless and not following guidelines and just saying screw you. So how would that work between the county and the city?
So the way. Yeah, the way that it was, it was discussed and presented was if we have somebody that's doing some blatant disregard to the county health order, that we could communicate basically to the county health office and bring them into the fold, if you, if you will, to move towards the, the citation or the penalties for, for enforcement. So that would be basically instigated by the city reaching out to the county health, health office to pursue a citation or a penalty for an abuser who's, who's continuing to, to not make choices to people in line.
So, because we've run into this with unpermitted work in restaurants and commercial buildings and things like that. Breweries that we've had issues with where we've had to work with smud to turn off their power along with a whole bunch of other things because they weren't complying with our laws and ordinances and zone and code enforcement, right? So is that the mechanism to which, so, so we're seeing like code enforcement goes out, sees it, tells them that, you know, you're not supposed to have your dining room open and then they just stay open? And so then we would bring the county in, is that even a necessity?
So it is a, it is a similar approach to how, you know, the code enforcement or even building permits are used. It's, it's a very similar approach from an ordinance standpoint. But yes, it would be basically not just utilizing the ordinance. It would be the county enforcing their health ordinance as part of the, the level of enforcement. But it would be only in those instances where they're asked to come and, and take a look and, and implement.
And I would.
Adam.
I do think it's, it's an appropriate time to say that in, in all the briefings that we participated in, they, they emphasized that they were, were not seeking a, a tool for either first time or small offenders, but rather they were seeking a tool for those who either violated in, in a truly extreme and extraordinary manner or who, or who simply said that they would not comply and had no intent to, to ever comply with the requirement. And, and I do think it's, it's worth stating that the, the, there were, were factors and considerations that were given for the enforcement officer to levy fines and given a, a broad range. And the highest fine that they, that the, you know, authorizes is ten thousand dollars. And that amount then on businesses and a thousand dollars on individuals. And that amount of the fine on businesses and that discrepancy between the two was the subject of considerable conversation. And Micah, you know, you, you may or may not choose to, to get into that. But the, the potential rationale for there being a significant difference between those two maximum amounts. But it was clearly not the intent that, that the immediate maximum amount would be levied. There were a series of criteria on which the enforcement officer would make that, that decision.
Well, and the, and the point of any good compliance or health department code enforcement or whatever it is, is to gain compliance. So the point of this is, you know, if you're not supposed to be congregating, if you're not supposed to have more than ten people in a room or whatever that is, that the goal isn't to collect fines because ju, the, the fines will never pay for the amount of work it takes to actually get compliant. So the point of this is a tool to get to compliance. So I'm not necessarily opposed to it. Or, I mean, if, you know, if you're going to go find a house party that has fifty people in it, you, you know, in theory, you're, the fine could be fifty thousand dollars, just split among fifty people that won't disperse or whatever that is. But I, I'm still, I'm still, I mean, it, to me, it just sounds like it's, it's another thing that we may need if we have a business that, that just flat out won't comply, which for the most part, at least in the spring when this happened and even over the summer, did we have much of a problem? I, I don't recall lots of examples of that. I mean, I, I, I remember when, you know, a business had their, their power shut off because they just wouldn't come into compliance with health and safety codes. And we, I mean, we've done that more, a handful of times since I've been on council.
So, so we've had three episodes. One of them happened maybe a little over a month ago. And that was the one with the religious service outside that, that was so flagrant and was not only, not only violating health, healthy practices, but was also making a huge noise and disruption in the, in the, in the neighborhood. But the two that happened in this last week have both been retailers. And one, one observed that they had been told not to ask people to wear masks. And the other one, the code enforcement and I observed maybe seventy-five percent of people, maybe sixty percent of people wearing masks and the other percent not. And, but in, in those two cases, then code enforcement, as, as they have done our entire history, took the attitude of education. They went out with equipment, they went out with flyers, they went out to talk to the manager and the employees and just as David said right at the beginning, stressed the importance of proper safe precautions. So I'm not sure it's restaurants or bars so much as it is retailers who are crowding a whole bunch of people in and not, are not even trying to require people to wear a mask.
I mean, I mean frankly, I, when it comes to restaurants and, and yeah, indoor dining is probably not going to be available really, really soon, at least for a while. But if I walked into a restaurant right now and there were, even just waiting in line, if there were three or four people out of ten not wearing masks, I'd probably just leave. So the number of times I've seen owners and, and, you know, restaurant workers, you know, go and offer somebody a mask because they didn't have one. I saw a guy over here at the Togo's that literally walked in and was trying to hold his shirt over his face because he didn't have one and the, the owner stopped what he was doing and said, you know, can I get your mask? And guy, oh yeah, great, yeah, and he ran over and gave him a mask and it was no problem. To me, like, the business owners that aren't following these guidelines are just inviting people to not go to their, to their, to their establishment. You know, restaurants, sure, dining rooms may close at some point, but the number of people that just aren't eating at restaurants at all because of fear of getting ill is a far worse thing than if we go and start shutting down, you know, dining rooms. It's just people aren't going out right now. That, I mean, that's the sad truth about everything that's happening with this, is people just choosing not to do it. But for those businesses that just do not want to comply with, with county ordinances and health ordinances, I, I see no problem with having another tool. I, I do, I do find it interesting, what would you find the individual for? Because none of the other things, whether it's the sheriff's department or anybody else, has ever come up with an ordinance. I mean, I know that there are ones in the Bay Area that I've seen do it, but is there an ordinance right now to say that you've got to wear a mask outside or, or in a restaurant? Or, I mean, there, there isn't an ordinance that exists that you could find somebody against. Really, the, the only, the only people that can, that can violate these rules are whatever business it is that, that has been deemed unsafe, right?
Well, Newsom said the other day, I mean, he's quoted as saying, everybody needs to wear a mask every time they go outside. Now, I don't think we do, any of us do that when we go walk the dog.
But that's, but that's a recommendation, that's not a law.
So, no, the, the recommendation there was to wear a mask anytime you're within six feet of another individual. So if you're going on a walk, he said, just have the mask available. So if you see somebody coming across, just put it on versus, you know, so it was, you do need to wear a mask every time you're outdoors as, when you're within six feet of somebody who is not within your family.
But, but there are examples of this being illegal. I, I was in Monterey, I told this story to a lot of you, the day before Fourth of July, and they will fine you fifty dollars for not wearing a mask when you're outside, period. We don't have that, the county doesn't have that, California doesn't have that. So what are you going to find an individual for? So I, I'm wondering what the thousand dollar fine would be as even compared to, to the business owner. I mean, the business owner, you know, and we've seen this with bars downtown and other things like that that just opened and they became super spreader events because they just disregarded everything. A business owner can, by their own merits, cause a lot of damage to the healthcare system very quickly if, if they so choose to ignore all of these, these protocols. An individual though, I, I just, I don't, I don't know what you're violating.
So let's ask, let's ask Michael back what, what it's.
I got a lot of people excited, go ahead.
Let's ask Michael what it says in the ordinance that, that's in response to Donald's question and then find out who really is in charge of enforcing this because everybody talks about the health department, but in reality, it, it, we have two different departments. The department that regulates restaurants and enforces the California Uniform Food Facility Retail Act is environmental management as opposed to the department that Dr. Siri is with. So which of those is involved in what?
Um, Councilmember Budge, I, I, I'll be, I'll be happy to elaborate on that. I was, I actually, we were also on a direct call with Dr. Billenson and Dr. Casiri. And the idea is that, you know, this is not about people wearing masks in public or not. This, the intent of this is to enforce the most egregious violations. They made that very clear that this is, they have had several cases of very egregious violations with gatherings, mostly gatherings, not, not so much smaller businesses. And this is to provide a tool, the enforcement arm would be EMD, Environmental Management Department with the county. And they would, they would request, they, they did commit that they would coordinate with the city and they would also invite the city code enforcement officers to go along with them, in some cases even if PD if needed. I don't, we have not offered any of that. I think it's, they see this as their whole, their health order and they also see themselves as responsible for enforcement.
So this is an interesting. Interesting balance of interests. You know, you can, you can understand the public health import here. And the challenge that public health has always is to get individuals to make certain decisions. And you guys probably saw me early on in March somewhat flummoxed by the notion of state public health authorities telling us, oh, you just need to go close for a couple of weeks. Because as a virologist, I was like, well, that's ridiculous. Can't close for a couple of weeks, we're talking a couple of months, six months, something, something long, depending on how rapidly this virus is, you know, going to go through our community and all that kind of stuff. What I didn't understand then was how worried the public health folks were about how people reacted to what they said or did. Because they were worried about rebellion, for lack of a better word. And so they sort of fed it to us in like, you know, little spoon, little spoonfuls of here comes your public health knowledge, here comes our public health requirements. And I think, you know, right now, we're kind of right at that edge. There's, there's just an edge, and I don't know if you guys feel it, but I, I kind of feel it, this edge out there of where people are in a. where people are in a rebellion of sorts. There are people out there-
Fed up.
Did not, yeah, exactly. We're just tired, we're fed up. Some people are going to the extreme and saying, this thing doesn't even exist, it's not really killing people, it's all a fraud. I don't think those are very reasonable arguments, but people have kind of had it. They've had it from the sense of, you know, my liberties have been tramped on, and people are telling me what to do, and it doesn't make any sense. And if public health only succeeds, it only succeeds if you can convince an individual to do what is in public health interests, to do what's in like, their corporate interests. There's really like, no, there's almost no, like, government mandated public health thing that you can do that can totally solve a, a public health situation. It's always comes down to, you have to convince individuals. So, when you get out to like, this, this edge, where you're gonna say, government's gonna tell you exactly what you have to do, and we're gonna fine you if you don't, you're kinda playing with that, that edge. And I personally would worry if, you know, like, the point, the time for this sort of thing might even be passed in my mind, this, this heavier handed activity. Because I worry about inspiring that edge that, uh, that I feel and we hear about, that, that, you know, rebellion, that could lead to even, like, even greater losses, right? This is why public health didn't do super hard crackdowns early on, because they thought, you know, if we do that, uh, we're gonna make so many people mad, they're gonna quit following all of our rules, and we're gonna have so many more cases because of that, let's just, you know, let this bad thing happen, we'll get past that, and the greater good, you know, will be served. And you, then you see Governor Newsom, you know, go to this party, and now, all these people are using that as an excuse, right? That's like, a, a, just a, oh, well, he did that, so I don't have to follow anything either. It's the personal decision it comes down to. The mayor of Denver does this big press event, says, do not travel, do not go visit, you know, anyone over Thanksgiving, do not bring your households together, and then he heads off to the airport and goes to a family reunion. I mean-
Oh, great.
Sanity.
Mayor of Austin, Mayor of Austin warned everybody, um, from the comfort of his condo in Cabo San Lucas.
Oh.
So, so-
Sleepable.
Where is it?
Those are, those are dumb acts, but it inspires this, this rebellion, you know? And I, I just worry that, are they being too heavy handed, too late?
I, I don't, hello? Hello?
Garrett, go ahead.
I can hear you.
All right, okay, cool. So, I mean, in all honesty, the, the business owners in Rancho Codo are sick and tired of this kinda garbage. I'm not willing to give the health inspector any more power, or any more tools. If we wanted to shut down a business because we thought that it was actively hurting people, it's nothing. We have tons of restaurants right now that are open, and are, are doing indoor dining in our city. And it's, you know, it's a personal decision of an adult to go in there and eat in that restaurant. And so, we need to understand that. And to put a ten thousand dollar fine is ridiculous. I'm, you're gonna force people either, A, underground, at this point, or B, they're just gonna do it in front. And plus, you're never gonna shut down a religious community, because God is more important than government. So, that's first off, before that happens. You're not gonna stop them from doing their awakening in their communities. Two, we're not reaching out to the group that's having trouble right now. We're trying to basically inflict pain to business owners, when most of the stuff is not coming from us, business owners. It's not our fault that people are getting these mass things, when people are coming together on frequent vacation stuff to meet with families. And you're not going to force this. To give them more power right now is ridiculous. They've already done a bad job. One, they took the hundred and twenty-six million dollars that was supposed to be for COVID tracing, didn't use it. Two, they've done, that, we have business owners that are now out of business, so we're gonna shut them back down, so everyone can be out of work. And three, to hear them actually be like, oh, we're only gonna use this, when's the last time the government's been like, you know what, give us this power, we're on, we promise we won't go after you, but this is just a tool that we might use. And that, it has never worked that way. It's always like, oh, now that I have this power, I'm gonna use it even after this is done. So, I'm not even interested in this. This is a terrible situation. Our businesses are hurting so bad, and they need us to step up and be like, no, this is not a good idea, you don't need no power. Why don't you guys take the same approach as Rancho Codo, and just do education, and understand, individual adults are gonna be individual adults. And David said it perfectly. They, it's the tipping point. Don't even try this, because it doesn't matter anymore. Everyone wants to fight now. It's a fight. So, unless you wanna do just straight education, and be like, look, we really don't want any more of our citizens getting sick, here's the best way, but you're an adult, you make the, you make the decision for yourself. That's what needs to come out their mouth. Not another, well, we're gonna give a fifty, a thirty, a seventy thousand dollar fine, because none of the businesses want to even hear that. Like, you can't tell that to someone that's had a business for thirty years, and now we're gonna shut it down again, when the numbers are doing wishy-washy. There's kinda this, kinda that, oh, this is impacted, wait, no, it's not impacted. Well, if you go into the emergency room, which I was in today, and there's no one there, I mean, we have to really think about, this is crazy. Because there's certain things, you go-
Garrett, Garrett, COVID patients aren't in emergency rooms, they're in COVID wings that you can't get to. And the numbers are real, the ICU beds are filling up, and we've been trying to get people to behave themselves, and they're not. And that's why we're in the crisis of the race. And the worst thing that's gonna happen with this is literally in a couple of weeks, if these ICU beds fill up, things are happening in other states, like rural South Dakota, where they're shipping people to other states, because they don't have more beds for people. That's what we're trying to avoid, because if you think that the death rate is a little high now, wait till you can't take care of everybody. Wait till you start prioritizing the people with underlying conditions that, that may not survive this, or need a, a respirator for a month or more, and they're just gonna say, yeah, we just don't have enough of those, or we don't have enough people to take care of. So, we're not, I, excuse me, but we are at a point where the things that we've been doing aren't working. So, our approach, and that's why I asked Michael very specifically, how is this new approach gonna work? Because we have what we have, and our hospitals are at twenty percent left capacity of ICU beds, and we're about to open up Arco Arena. So, don't tell me this isn't real. Now, the question becomes-
So, so, hold on, if, if we split up this discussion between commercial and, um, individuals, that way we can go after it one at a time, right? Because I think there's two sides.
Well, I, to, to me, they're both, they're both. If somebody's gonna come in on this council and start to say that this is all a conspiracy, and that the numbers are wishy-washy, the ICU beds are filling up and they're about to run out. And what has happened since, since Halloween, is that there continues to be gatherings. Uh, yes, I agree, that is where the, the problem tends to be. David, you're a better, uh, you know, judge of that, but shutting down indoor dining, all those other things that we did before, worked. And I, yes, it is going to be very painful for businesses, and I hope that, that everyone survives, and we can figure this out, and if our government does some more stimulus, and, and we get through the next few weeks, and we start to get, you know, vaccines and everything out. But to sit here and just go, we're not gonna do anything, and we're just gonna keep doing what we're doing, when, when the hospitals are filling up, and when they run out of capacity, that's when more people will start to die. That's what we're trying to avoid here.
Or, or people, a ton of people are gonna die, because they lose their livelihoods. So, I guess that-
Not really. I don't think, I don't think you can say people are gonna die because they lose their livelihoods. I mean, they, I, I have, I have personally volunteered at food pantries, and I know there's food to give away. There is food for everybody. Lots of food. So, we're not, no, nobody's gonna die because of lack of food, but I think we should split this discussion to small business fines and individuals, because if, if it's the in- individuals at gatherings, did you mean at home, or did you mean religious gatherings? Because let's, let's break this down. There's a lot of, uh, pieces to this puzzle, so if we do it one at a time and see, is, let's see what we're gonna do with a commercial, small business, what's our guidance there, and then go to the individuals. That way-
Well, to be, just to be really clear, this is not our ordinance.
It is not. It's just our gui- what we want, right?
County proposal, and the question is, should we do anything about the county proposal? You know, we could, the strongest thing we could do is write a letter. Um, that, that's like, it, and then the debate would be, well, what's in that letter? Can we, could we come to a consensus on what that would be? And if we can't, then I guess we just, we let the county do what they do, we probably can't stop it, uh, or alter it in any case anyway.
Well, well, David, no, but again, that, that was why my question to Michael was, how do we enforce it? Because ultimately, we need to cooperate in order to do it. Siri, I think to your question, let's, if we want to talk about individuals, I don't think there's a law out there that says we can go into somebody's backyard and break up the, the, the block party. I don't know if there's any law out there that exists. Not to mention, we contracted the, with the sheriff's department, and the sheriff has said that he is going to, that he's instructed all of his deputies not to enforce any kind of health ordinance. So, we don't have a policing power that allows us to enter someone's property and break up a party. Churches, I think that, I think, I think it, I think the, whatever just happened with the Supreme Court is gonna make its way through for California and figure out how that's gonna be affected at some point. But at this point, churches aren't allowed to operate. Um, and so, I, I guess we would be the ones responsible for, for addressing something like that. Um, businesses, though, we regulate businesses. We, we issue business licenses, and when businesses aren't operating in a way that, that, that we have licensed them to be, um, there have been many instances, that non-COVID related, where we've come in and fined them, and, and started off by saying, you can't do that, you need to do this, you need to bring us, you know, permits for your lighting, and your electrical, and everything else like that. And if you just ignore us for six months, after we continue to try to educate you and bring you to the table to convince you, yes, we will turn off your power and fine you. Um, and we do that for all kinds of things, and there's no reason to say that we wouldn't do that for COVID. Um, and-
Except that it's not, except that it's not included in the, um, California building code. What you're talking about-
No, I'm just, I'm using that as an example of, of something that we've enforced. If, you know, if, if our code enforcement walked into a business, or into a restaurant, and they saw rats all over the place, then they would call the county, you know, health department, and they would come and find them. It's kinda the same idea here. If we see somebody that's blatantly disregarding the law, the, the, the agency that would fine them really is, it's the health agency, right?
Yeah, we don't have, we, we have no public health expertise.
Right.
Our moral authority is the city. That's not, this is what counties do, not, not cities in California.
Right, right. If, if, if somebody caught the chef not washing his hands after going to the bathroom and, in the bathroom at the restaurant, the county would fine them for that. We wouldn't. We would just, in, in this case, what I'm understanding, Mike, is that if we had an egregious violation reported to the city, we would include the, the county health department, and they would try to get them to comply. If they didn't, there is now going to be a fine for not complying. Just like there's a fine for, you know, not cleaning out the, the grease trap of your fryer every night at a restaurant. I mean, there's all kinds of things that they're supposed to be doing. This is just one more.
Would a little information be helpful to the council, just on some of the distinctions that you were just, to, to Councilman Fulpai's, um, comment as to the distinction, um, between commercial and non-commercial. Uh, the, the penalty that, for non-commercial, meaning private or individual violations, or family violations, including family violations, anything non-commercial, um, I, I just wanna correct myself, I mean, it is a maximum of five hundred dollars, and a minimum of twenty-five dollars. The, the maximum violation for commercial activities is a fine not to exceed ten thousand dollars, and a minimum fine of two hundred and fifty dollars. The county has specific factors, um, that include the gravity of the public health risk by the violation, whether the, the responsible party has been previously counseled regarding the violation, um, and for violations involving commercial activities, whether it's likely to result in increased revenue or avoided costs, um, whether it's been the subject of a prior citation, whether they're making good faith efforts to achieve or maintain compliance, and other matters relating to the circumstances and gravity of the violation. In the conversations that, um, all three staff members on the, on the, the call were a part of, they did emphasize, um, that part of the distinction in those amounts, and part of the distinction in those approaches, is based on two factors. One is that if there was only small amounts, if there were only small fines, that individual business owners might make just the pure straight economic decision, that it was less expensive, um, to, to continue violating than it was to, um, comply. Um, and secondly, we did hear them say that as a practical matter, yes, getting into and seeing what's happening in someone's living room is much more difficult than getting into and seeing what's happening in someone's restaurant, or someone's, um, commercial enterprise that's open to the public. Um, Cyrus or Michael, do you want to supplement that?
Hey, Adam, what did the Supreme Court rule about churches, and us shutting them down?
Uh, the Supreme Court has taken issue with, um, a number of cases, in part based upon how broad, um, the authority that they, that the local governments were given, um, and, um, and whether or not there was sufficient justification for the extent of the regulations, whether the, the standard that they met was, was adequate. So, um-
And did, and then they vote five-four in favor of not being able to shut down churches?
It was not that simple.
Um, they voted, they, they, ye- yes, they voted against-
I thought so.
Against the, 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 the-
Yes.
The measure that was in front of them. And in part, they did it because one of the rationales was that it was too narrowly focused on religious institutions, and not generally focused on all-
Yep.
-kinds of, um, all, all, all kinds of activities. This ordinance isn't, um, just directed at churches or a particular group. It's directed at all non-commercial, and, and also all commercial activities.
So, my opinion is, is that the, the county doesn't need this tool. So, they, they have enough tools that they really want to get done, meaning their own police force isn't going to enforce anything. And I don't wanna be the ones to write or help them to shut down any of our businesses, even if the people, if the adults in our community want to make these decisions, they should be able to make them. I, I, if they want to, if, if, the clinging to six foot distance restaurants that are proven that they're, they are not super spreaders, or they are not causing anything, because the numbers and the science shows they are not, and that the, these numbers are coming from other things, I don't see why we're bashing, it feels like the county's just grabbing a hammer and bashing all us business owners like nails, because they can't figure out where the thing is coming from. And it's, it shows in the numbers, and it shows in the county data, and I talked to the county health people, and I've talked to some county officials that showed these numbers, they're not coming from us business owners. And they don't need this power, and they're just getting ready to enforce more stuff on us, instead of really addressing what the situation is coming from. So, I don't see the need for us to be the bad guy, us to be the ones to push this out, or for us to be snitching on our citizens, because they're eating, because they happen to have a restaurant open, and it's the last thing to be able to keep them from their family being evicted. Like, that's not how we get down. And I understand the, the criticism, and I understand the concerns, because this virus is real, and it makes people sick, and I get that. However, these are adults that wanna keep their restaurant, and if you choose to go into a restaurant, that, and, and everyone, no one's not doing the spacing, but we're talking about, it's raining and cold, and they wanna go inside to eat. You know, you know, and, and I don't feel that we need to be these bad people. I think we're doing a fine job. It's, uh, the numbers aren't even, it's, it's the numbers that are coming from citizens in, in groupings. It's not coming from us business owners. And I wish they would stop using us as a whipping for the entire county of us, the, the business is the reason it's coming from. It's not. It, it's, it, they don't need this tool.
I, yeah, just, yeah, add on to that. Uh, Donald, you referenced the science report, and I'll give my best prognostication here. We're seeing a big spike, obviously, from Thanksgiving. It started, as you pointed out, around, uh, Halloween, went up, went, it's gone up a lot from Thanksgiving. We haven't seen the full extent of the Thanksgiving wave yet, because there's always a delay. People get it, and then they get a little sicker, and then they end up getting admitted to the hospital, and then they get put in ICU. So, it's, and then they die. So, there's this delayed process of those numbers going up. We do see that those gross numbers are like, double what they were during the, the spike or the bump in the summer, and we probably haven't seen the peak of that yet. So, we could easily be double summer rates of stuff. My guess is, the death rate would be a little lower than in the summer, because we're a little smarter about how to treat it in that interim, but I don't know how much lower it will go. Could go a lot lower if we discover more stuff, or maybe this is as good as it's gonna get, in terms of death rate. The question is, now Christmas comes up, and New Year's, and all those holidays, what happens? And frankly, if you just like, do the math from Thanksgiving, you could see a much larger wave. There won't be enough vaccine around to really temper that. The vaccine won't be around long enough, really, to even temper that, even though we're supposedly getting some next week, uh, for healthcare workers, and maybe, maybe it even gets into senior citizens' residence, I'm not sure. But that, that wave then will come in January and the early part of February, probably, would be maybe the end of whatever that wave is, if it ceases. So, it's really an unknown. I think there is a risk that you use up the ICU beds. And, uh, on Garrett's side, definitely, this is not like a restaurant spreading disease, it's not a school spreading disease, it's not a small business spreading disease. Although those cases, the school one is kinda easier to look at, the small business one is a little harder to look at in the epidemiology. And in Sacramento County, we can't do a good job of it, because we don't do good contact tracing, uh, because we spent money elsewhere. But it, it's, what's happening is these gatherings, you know, big groups of people getting together at their homes, oh, these are my family, they couldn't possibly be infected. And you have a few people there who are asymptomatic, and, and can spread it. So, that's where it's coming from. My, the point I was trying to make earlier was, you know, if you come home down really hard, and say, you know, government's gonna do this, and you start- and saying, oh, government's going to do this, and you start insulting people's feeling of liberty and self-control, and, and scaring them, or they think you're being over the top, then they rebel. And does that rebellion cause worse behavior than if you'd done nothing else? Nothing to begin with, you know what I mean? Like, you push too hard, you get pushed back. The pushback is worse than the thing you're trying to stop. That's the, that's the question. And I do wish, I really do wish, we could focus on where the cases are actually happening, because we seem to keep saying, we have these three buttons to push, so we're going to push these three buttons. But I just don't hear any discussion at all about going to where the major cases seem to be erupting. It's private family gatherings, and this is really hitting the Hispanic community hard. If you look at the numbers
So David
Far above the weight.
Can I, so let me pick your brain for a sec. Um, I think the best example that we can look at of a completely unregulated economy for anything of this is Wisconsin. Their state Supreme Court didn't, I want to say June or July, basically said Tony Evers, their governor, has no authority to regulate anything. And the next day, all their bars got, or that night, I think, I think they, I think they issued the, the ruling at five o'clock in the afternoon. I remember watching on CNN and stuff, you know, reporters, and this was, this may have been before even mask recommendations had come out, or right around there. And you saw bars just fill up. I mean, I'm trying to remember, one of the guys who works with it, with the airshow, I think started the airshow, lives in Wisconsin, and they're saying that, like, their hospitals have been overflowing and overrunning for months, and it, and it, it's costing people their lives because they're not getting good care. Like, this isn't just about if you have enough remdesivir or, or, or these other antibody, you know, treatments or whatever else. The point is, is if you can't get into a hospital bed to be seen, you're more likely to die. I mean, so Garrett, I, I, I emphasize with business owners, with everybody that, that's a part of this, and, and David, I think you're right, too, right? There's only so many buttons that we've had to push. And again, my question is, you know, at what point, you know, there's the city of Monterey that's not being that really impacted, and they're finding, as, as far as I know, still $50 if you're not wearing a mask outside, regardless of how close you are to anybody. $50 if you're caught outside without a mask. Is that the right way to go? I don't know. I'm not a health expert, but we do regulate business. And it, it's been shown that, you know, taking your mask off inside, sitting at a table, you know, and I can tell you the, the handful of times I've gone in to just get takeout in a restaurant, and I've seen people that I know eating at a table, not from the same household, you know, getting together with other people. I've even seen some of our restaurants when they were doing outdoor dining, and they would push together a table of 25 people. You know that they don't all live together, right? And now they're all taking their masks off, they're within six feet. So Garrett, as much as I, 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 I want to support businesses as much as you do, but, and I get these people want to pay their bills, but at this point, it, it seems like we're months away from being, you know, seeing light at the end of the tunnel. This is not the time to just throw our hands up and go, we're not going to fix anything and leave our businesses alone.
But, but if I, if I have, if the numbers in front of me are showing that that's not the problem, so putting out of business another thousand or 2,000 businesses, that isn't the fix. That isn't to help. That's not where the problem's coming from. That's what the numbers are showing. We're not looking at the actual science anymore. I think David can back me up here. The only virologist we have, he will back me up. So what you're saying is you want to smash this, but I'm telling you that's not where the numbers are saying.
First off, first off
So let's not do that.
First off, please don't speak for me and say that I want to do anything. And I just got done saying, I don't want to hurt businesses. But at the same time, I want, I don't want there to be an overrun of our hospitals. And, and quite frankly, and with all due respect, I, I don't know the numbers of whether or not restaurants are causing it. I, I do know that, that, that family gatherings are one of the, the things, but I think our, our response rate on contact, on contact tracing in the county is about 50%. So the other 50%, we have no idea where they got it, because they're not talking to anybody, mainly because they don't admit that they engaged in really unhealthy and unwise activities, probably family gatherings, yes, and parties and a lot of other things. So we probably do need to explore how, how and if we want to tackle some sort of enforcement like that. But that really should come from the county. But it does sound like the county is willing to adopt some sort of fee to go along with, with, with an enforcement strategy for individuals and for homes or parks or whatever you're doing. But Garrett, frankly, the things I've seen, even in outdoor dining this summer, were really, there, there were, there were bad examples of, of what people were doing, and the restaurants were allowing them to engage in that. And again, even in somebody's parking lot, if I see 30 people having lunch together or brunch together, that's a problem. So we're still not at the point where, 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 not only are, are the patrons not behaving themselves, neither are the businesses.
So, so hold on. So Garrett, I just want to ask Cyrus this question. So Cyrus, are you looking for guidance from this council on whether we should go ahead and, on our recommendation, right? Because we can debate on this all day long on how we want it to go, but if we want to provide our guidance to the county supervisors on what we want to go, is, is there a staff recommendation, and then we could pick it up from there? Or you want to start from the council on where we want to recommend, and then go through the rest of the council to see where we stand?
My guess is, Sarah, from what I'm hearing, we do not have enough consensus as a group to say these are the three things we would say in a letter. My recommendation in, in that circumstance would be to just, we, we, we almost never act on one of these county matters.
Right, but I think this is such a grave matter, and each city is different, like, like Donald keeps brings, keeps bringing up Monterey, but Monterey has a huge tourist income to the city. They have a huge footprint. So they have a lot of people that come and go. So for them, having that mask mandate is, is different from us as a city of Rancho Cudov, where we have the same kind of people within the city. We're not a tourist. So each city is different, and we know the city the best. So from that perspective, you know, is there, can we go and say, okay, you know, this is what we're seeing in our cities, so here's our recommendation. I understand small business owners are already going through a really hard time, and that's all of us are in alignment with that fact. With that said, can we go in with a recommendation that if they follow their six-feet social distancing, and they follow their masks, and blah, 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 first, you know, we are okay with, you know, getting this, whatever, pat on the hand, or whatever the, whatever they get, right? Education? And then there's two, and then they do it a third time, and then they get the fine. Is that something that we can go with?
I think, let me just elaborate. First of all, I, I think to Mayor's point, this is not our ordinance. This is a county-proposed ordinance that will be heard by the county board of supervisors tomorrow. And the positions that we can take, it would be to support the ordinance as it's, as it's written, oppose it, stay neutral, or support it with some modifications. I think the, the, what we, the county staff has presented to us, they're looking for a mechanism to have some tools available to them to go after the most egregious violations. And we also, we've also been told that their first and primary mechanism would be education, and it's, they're not planning on taking a heavy-handed approach. So, and I, and I think they, the, the goal, the ultimate goal is to give them a tool. And so, and those are the options the council has. We really don't have, we're not in a position to, to provide a recommendation to the council, because as you can see, this is a hardly debated topic throughout the whole nation, not, not only in our state. And I think ultimately it depends on what goals and objectives we want to pursue, and what it is, and what position we want to take.
So there is a, a parallel here. Every park in the Cudov Recreation and Park District has a sign somewhere that says, no dogs off leash, no ball playing, nobody in the park, or, or park closes at 10, and one other, oh, no pipes flying, I think. And the point is that nobody, either in the sheriff's department or the Rancho Cudov Police Department, is running around specifically seeking out these violations and enforcing them. But because they are in, in, in law, and because they are publicly posted, if there is a problem that gets reported, then the police or the sheriff can go and do something about it. And it strikes me that this is the same kind of ordinance. You know, for, from Garrett's perspective, nobody is actively running around looking for, looking over people's backyards to see how many people you've got at your barbecue table. But from Donald's perspective, if they hear, we would not repeat, and Garrett, I'm sorry it was a church, but they would not have to repeat the issue that happened this summer in Lincoln Village, where these, these hundreds of people were gathered, and it, and yes, it was because they came together for a religious celebration, but in reality, they were causing other nuisances within the community, and people could, the law enforcement could have done something about it, but they felt like they didn't have the tool to do it. So if you consider what Cyrus says about just needing a tool, then, and no, and, and providing education, and nobody actively, we're not dedicating police officers to go around and look, look for people doing this, but it means they can legally respond when something is reported. And that's probably a good way to look at it.
Yeah, I, I, I think part of the debate, I think, between Garrett and I, Garrett, I, I, what I'm hearing you say is, when this new shelter-in-place order goes into effect, and we hit that threshold, and it triggers closing down outdoor dining, which I, I don't think we're at yet, I think you're advocating that we don't comply. And I think what we've been doing since the beginning of this entire crisis is listening to the county health director, and falling in line, and asking our businesses, and educating our businesses, to abide by the health orders. That's it. I think that's the debate that Garrett and I are having. I think irrespective of this fee and this fine, has to do with enforcing whatever those rules are. And so I think at least three of us still on this council, while being a very difficult thing for businesses in general, and restaurants and anybody that won't be allowed to operate or has to do it in a reduced capacity, so I'm, Sarah, I don't know if you want to weigh in, because you haven't been asked this before. This council, we declared an emergency back in April, I want to say, and we've been following the county's health directives and orders, and, and the, and the governors as they've jumped, as they've come through. I have no interest in disregarding those anytime soon. This is not Placer County, where they just undeclared their emergency and have basically scoffed at anybody, the governor or anybody else telling them what to do with anything. And you can already see, they're probably going to be the first county that, that gets overrun with ICU beds, which is going to cause ripple effect over this entire region of what is 18 counties that are now affiliated in some way, and, and for good reason. If they run out of hospital beds in Placer County, they're coming here. So we are all in this together, from Chico all the way down to, I believe it's Stockton, is still part of our area. So I, for one, will continue to support the county health officers, and the scientists, and, and healthcare providers that are asking for this help. And yeah, it stinks, and it, restaurants probably aren't the driving force behind a lot of this, but we're limited when it comes to, to the enforcement of some of the other areas. So these are the, these are the tools that we have in front of us.
Well, two practical things are happening.
So, so Donald, I
So first of all, so first of all, as the weather changes and becomes cold and rainy, the, the, the sad thing for all of our restaurants is that they will not, the majority of them won't be able to operate because their patios are not built to, not constructed to keep the rain off, and apparently, there's a huge shortage in the big heater, outdoor heater things. But then the other reality is that, as Donald just said, both the chamber and the city have been not just repackaging, but basically putting out emails to all the members, everybody on our speed blast list, that these are the rules that are now in effect. And, you know, Cyrus always makes it personal. He always says, you know, and, and we encourage you all to do these things. So it's not like we're making up the rules.
Right, we just, we just, I'm siding back again.
I'm going to go back to what Donald said. I don't know what he's talking about, about the arguments at the groups. I wasn't making that point at all. I don't think we should give an unelected body of doctors who should be advising their police force or the politicians this power. I think we should send a letter that says, you have enough resources to be able to enforce a rule. I don't think they need a $10,000 fine to slap off whoever they want, and they're going to try to guard the businesses, and I don't think they need that power. And I do not believe that they won't abuse that power down the way. So that was the discussion we had, because it's over a $10,000 fine, and I don't think that we should give the county that, that more, that much more power. I don't think they need that. And it's not like I, all we could do is send a letter that says, we don't agree with it. And I'm going to call in and say, I don't agree with it. But as for a group, if we don't want to write a letter that says, we all agree with giving more power to a group that just wasted $126 million on contact tracing and saying, oh, now we should give them a stick to hit our business owners with, I just don't think that's the right decision or the right look. David said this is all about, you know, this is how, we don't want to make people start to get irate to be like, we're not going to follow any of the rules. I don't think they need that. I think actually ranchers have it, handling it perfectly with just instruction and stuff like that. And so that's what I'm talking about. I'm talking about this one thing that Cyrus read about. I'm not talking about an argument between the businesses, and should we have that? That's another discussion down the way. What I'm saying is that they don't need this. They don't need the stick. Their own police force will not enforce it. I do not want to give the power to a health official to come and write letters to tell people we're going to do that. We can handle all that. We've been doing it fine in our city. So that's what I'm not, I, I hear
Garrett, we don't do this, and, and if somebody was engaging in doing outdoor dining in advance, it would be the health department that would find them, just like if the chef wasn't washing his hands, it would be the health department, and the, because they're violating the health code, you wouldn't send a cop out for it. You wouldn't send a code enforcement officer out for it.
So we, why do they need, they don't need this $10,000 fine?
Okay, that's your opinion. Does anybody want to agree with Garrett? Because there's a good thing in our data, too.
Let's take public comment on this item. Stacy, I think we had a couple. I think we had one by email circulated earlier today that I saw. Maybe there was a second, I'm not sure.
I have two in Zoom. I have one public comment that came by email, and I have one in the room. So let's start with the ones on Zoom who have been patiently waiting and holding up their hands for a very long time. So we'll start with
Their arms must be so high.
So I'm going to go ahead and call on Diane Rogers. Diane, are you there? You'll have three.
Are you Zooming with us, Diane?
Yeah, my, you guys can hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. With respect to this particular ordinance, I want to make it really clear that the chamber's position in opposing this is based on a couple of things. The discrepancy between the fines, the fines for non-commercial events are up to $250, the fines for commercial events or incidences are up to $10,000. That discrepancy sends a horrible message to the business community that they're being targeted specifically. If you, in the example of the church that was mentioned before, it's not being opposed to church, but there's an awful lot of churches I know, private parties, Christmas parties, that would gladly pay a $500 fine in order to continue to have their Christmas party. So that's the one major issue. The second issue that we have is that the county made it very clear in the city meetings, I was with many of the people on this call, that they are, don't have the resources or the tools to be able to go after the real problem, and the county health officer has said very clearly that the primary spreader of these things is private parties and private events. So instead, it's our view that they're intentionally going after business because that's the low-hanging fruit, and not taking any action against the private parties that are taking place. What I would ask to consider is ask the county to put the same amount of emphasis and time in trying to solve the real problem, rather than intentionally trying to go specifically go after what's perceived the low-hanging fruit in this particular case. So, and finally, on the restaurant issue, and Donald, you make a lot of very, very good points, but I would also point to the fact that any restaurant who gets a bad review or on Yelp or anything, that they're not following the, the protocols, they're going to be, they're going to be toast anyway. And please do know that it's the chamber's perspective, that we've been strongly, strongly urging our business community to follow protocols, wear the masks, we've been distributing over 500 bags, asking people to go on the websites and find out what the rules are. what the rules are. So we need to keep up that energy and not, and, and also address the real problem with which David well mentioned is the act of the groups, some of those groups that are meeting. That fine disparity just sends a horrible message to business community. Thanks.
Thank you, Diane. You guys have been great partners through this crisis. We really appreciate it. We look forward to continuing to work with you.
Thank you.
Our next public speaker, um, is calling in by phone with the telephone number 1-916-54. I'm not going to read the rest of the numbers, but if you can go ahead, you'll have three minutes and please identify yourself.
Are you there on the phone? Going once. Going twice. All right, Stacy, let's try another.
Okay. Darrell Langwell, if you'll come forward.
Uh, Darrell is in the room, I bet.
Yes, sir. Darrell.
Yep.
Good evening again, mayor and, uh, council members, Darrell Langwell, Vineyards Neighborhood. Uh, I tend to agree with, uh, Vice Mayor Gatewood that let adults be adults. And I would also take exception to something that Councilwoman Pullapatti said, I can read it from here. Since we've had these shutdowns and everything with COVID, suicides are up. People are losing their lives because of the restrictions that are being put on them. And just within the last week, we had an 11-year-old commit suicide while he was zooming for his distance learning. Now exactly how much the isolation and everything from COVID had to do with that, I don't know because I wasn't there, but I would not discount it as being a contributing factor. Thank you.
Um, I'd just like to reiterate my fact that I said people, um, are, are not dying because of no food, that there's food on the table. It was, it had, it was not because of isolation or other factors that are leading to depression, which is a huge factor, uh, a side effect of this, uh, COVID. And I take it very seriously.
Okay, Stacy, do we have other further comments?
The, um, last public comment that I see for this item came via email. Uh, all council members, city attorney and the city manager also received this item as well as the deputy city attorney. It's also printed in the back of the room for the public. Uh, it is from Gabriel Ingram and, um, Gabriel is asking, um, in the email, uh, that the city council, uh, reapproached the topic of declaring Rancho Cordova a sanctuary city for businesses like Atwater City did and provided a lengthy email as well as some additional That's all that I have for that item.
Okay. Yeah, I emailed her and, uh, I think she suggested in the email she was representing a local business, but I don't know which one. I think she got back to me on that. Okay, did we ever get through to 916-549-something?
No, I can try again.
They are still muted. I see them on the screen here, but they're muted.
Yep.
Very good. Well, council, uh, we could try motions or we could, I could guess at what the consensus is here. Sounds like we have a wide range of opinions represented. Um, Linda, I really liked, I really liked your analogy to the rules in the park.
Yeah, for sure, David. Thank you. So I'll, I'll, um, I'll try a motion. Um, um, so I will move that we oppose the ordinance, um, with the suggestion that they, um, uh, focus, uh, continue to focus on education, um, that they, uh, uh, significantly reduce the fines against the business community or to create more parity, more parity, more equity between the two, um, groups of fines. Um, and that they, I, I don't know how to, um, I don't know how to phrase, um, that they not actively enforce it, but use it as a, an enforcement tool if complaints are received.
So-
I'm not sure how you legally say that, Adam.
So I, I don't want to second that, but I do want to speak to it really quick. The, the point of what I was trying to get across, and I, I think it's what me and Garrett were somewhat debating, because I think Garrett is, is of the mindset that as these additional restrictions go into place triggered by the governor and by the county, I think his position is we shouldn't enforce them. So regardless of what the fine is, like, so regardless of what the county adopts, it's how we are going to choose when we are engaged by, by, for violators, right? If somebody calls the city to say there's a nightclub operating that's not serving food or, you know, and people aren't socially distancing and they're screaming and whatever else, that what are we going, what are we going to choose to do? So as far as the resolution, I, I, I'm not voting on anything that would oppose their action because clearly if they don't feel like they have enough tools to get compliance, they may need additional tools. It's the same thing we do here. And a lot of times we'll engage other jurisdictions to help us, other jurisdictions and governments like SMUD or whoever else to help us when we're trying to do this. So this is the health department asking the county for, for an additional tool. That they run the, the, the health department, we don't. Um, as far as Diane said something about that the max fine was 250, I heard that it was a thousand. So if you had 50 people in a social gathering and you chose to fine them, if the county chose to fine them, you could in theory fine 50 people, you know, a thousand dollars and it's a $50,000 fine. So-
I don't know in today's economy how you would ever collect a thousand dollars from every public area that had been in the backyard.
Yeah. It's a bother.
Yeah. And, and again, to me, to me, fines when it comes to these things are fairly irrelevant because ultimately they're, they're not revenue generating. It's about trying to get compliance. So you're not going to look at a $10,000 fine unless you're talking to somebody who just willfully says, I'm not listening to you and I'm going to endanger people's lives over and over and over. So-
So we do have, we do have a motion on the table. We need to know if there's a second.
There is a motion.
Second.
Second by Gatewood. Donald, did you propose a modification to the motion I heard in what you were saying?
No, I, because I, because I don't think that the action that the county is taking really affects us until we choose how we're going to enforce it.
I, I, but I also heard you say, uh, you don't want to vote for anything that's in opposition, but you didn't object to the substance that Linda listed after the opposition.
Call or I'll call, you'll find out.
So my, my point is, is there a point of consensus here where we find language that says focus on where the problem is and focus on education?
I'm in alignment-
Go ahead, go ahead.
No, I was going to say, I'm in alignment with what Linda said. We're all adults here, you know? People have to take their own responsibility when they want to go out and shop. We should not be the ones trying to shut down small businesses who are trying to make a livelihood. They should be the ones taking all the precautions to get people to their establishment because they are safe and secure and following the protocols. Um, that said, you know, um, how do we, you know, enforce that, making sure that they do it? Um, that's, that's the fine line.
And quite frankly, uh, let me say it again. In the last two weeks, there've been two back-to-back examples of, uh, retailers that are not, uh, not seeking compliance. And code enforcement has been out and taken them educational materials and had a chat with managers and employees. And that's what we can do. And that's the responsible thing to do. And it doesn't put ourselves in any danger, I mean, our staff in any danger. And it doesn't put the, um, doesn't put the, the employees in the retail organization in danger. But it tells them that they have, um, they have the right and the responsibility to try to get their patrons to comply.
Roll call.
Councilmember Budge, could, could, just for, for clarity, um, I, I heard you hesitate a bit with how best to articulate your third point.
Yeah.
And, and I also, um, for staff's benefit, um, could I restate and make sure that we have a clear understanding and can help you with that last point?
Absolutely.
So the request, the, the motion would be to oppose the county's adoption of the ordinance.
As currently written.
As currently written. And instead to focus on education. The third point you said was that you wanted an increase in the parity between the two fine categories.
Correct.
And is that a, if the county nevertheless decides to proceed with adoption of this ordinance, you would ask them to amend it to increase parity between fines? And third, and, and again, the, the fourth point was, was, I think, had the same qualification. If the county chooses to adopt this, you would ask, the council would ask that in enforcing it, it, I, I believe what you wanted is that-
How about, how about it's reactive, not proactive?
It'd be used reactively, not proactively.
Right. Yeah, that makes sense.
So that it'd be, it'd be enforced as a result of complaint, it'd be, it'd be complaint-based, not, not, not proactive tool. So can I restate those just for all of your colleagues? That the position would be one that the city would oppose the, the ordinance as, as written.
Yep.
And instead that it would ask the council, that the county to focus on education rather than using new tools like this ordinance. However, if the county does proceed with adoption, you would ask that they amend the ordinance, one, to increase parity between the two fine categories, and also that they provide direction to use it as a reactive, not proactive tool.
Can you define reactive versus proactive? It's like, so when somebody complains, then you go ahead versus, how would we do proactive? Like, would we fine them before? What's the proactive?
No, no.
Proactive means proactive is for good.
Somebody's not driving around looking for it.
Yeah, yeah. Staff is not going out looking for violations. Uh, uh, proactive, a proactive enforcement would be a code enforcement or health officer is driving around and, and, and writes something up. Um, reactive would be in response to one or many complaints from the public.
The public being the proactive, aye.
You're, you're reactive if you're responding to the public asking you to filing a complaint. And our, our code enforcement, for example, is a combination of both.
I think that that language probably threads the needle for me. It doesn't reject in entirety the idea that we might need to do something more to control this. It tells them to focus on where the problems are and, and to work harder on education and where those problems are. And then it also suggests that if you have to do this, then here's, here's a, a better or more, uh, a more moderate way to pursue it.
Yeah.
Do you think, do you think we should write in it that we wanted to multiple languages or do you think they'll get the hint this time?
Oh, interesting.
Because that, this is the half their problem, that they're not doing good reach out to the communities that don't speak native language that well.
Um, let's put that in because quite frankly, I think everything we, we all do should be in multiple languages.
Be part of their education efforts.
All the, all the utilities do it, you know? SMUD, everybody, um-
Can we also put in a language, do you know, when we mean education, really spell it out, you know, like these gatherings are the ones that we see are probably causing, um, the spike. So, you know, so what, people are not aware that this is what's causing the spike and, and like, uh, the mayor, uh, pointed out that certain communities are gathering because they think they're in, within a bubble and that causes a spike. So we need that kind of awareness also to be, um, spread within, um, the city.
Shall I restate that again? If the council, does the council agree with, um, Councilmember Pullapatti's recent suggestion?
Sure. Just to find, um, just to find educational outreach, uh, you know, just to add a couple of words, um, focus on educational outreach to, to identify the nature of the problem.
Um, mayor, may I, may I confirm that the right word to describe what she was just saying would be vectors?
I'll, I'll work with you on that.
Work fast, they're, they're voting on it tomorrow.
Yeah.
But can we?
Tomorrow morning, I-
So, so do we have a second and are we taking a vote?
We have a second with Gatewood.
We have a second.
As long as he agrees a serious language modification there.
I get them, they sound educational. Good, do it.
Okay, Donald, do you have a further comment?
No.
Okay. Um, any other comments about this?
Is, is that clear to the city manager and assistant city manager?
Yes, just a clarification that the hearing at the county board of supervisors is scheduled at 10:00 a.m. tomorrow morning. So we need to, uh, articulate our recommendations and, and send it to them. So we will, based on this very specific restatement that our city attorney provided, we will write a letter and will send forward that to, uh, our board representatives, uh, tomorrow morning before 10:00 a.m.
Great.
Okay.
Cyrus, can you speak, uh, the, the phone number and how I get into the Zoom meeting, please?
Uh, I believe it's on the county website. I'll, I'll look for it and I would, it, it is, uh, being broadcast live. So I will, I will send that link.
Yeah, there, yeah, that streams live.
Does it stream live or is it that?
Yep.
Yes, it is. I think online it's live.
Yeah, no, you, if, if you're trying to get into the, the, like, our side of it, like as a presenter or a panelist, you have a special link, but it, it, you click, just like on our website, you click on it right now and it will live.
All right, uh, if there's no further discussion, I will make a little statement after this vote, but, um, why don't we do a roll call?
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Pullapatti?
Yes.
Councilmember Terry? Vice Mayor Gatewood? Mayor Sander?
So I don't, I don't want to take the risk that someone mixed and characterizes, uh, what we just talked about or the impact of, uh, of what we were just discussing. So I would just want to make this statement, I think it's on behalf of all of us, I don't think I'm going to say anything controversial. You know, we all want this returned to normal. We can all feel it. We all want the economy back. We want our schools open. We want to be able to protect our families and, and friends from this pandemic. Our, uh, the medical research is clear. If we fail, there's going to be even worse consequences for our family and our economy. So we got to work hard together not to fail. We all have a personal responsibility. It's on us to slow the spread of this pandemic and to eliminate the virus as quickly as we can. So therefore it's imperative that we take an effective and fact-based approach. So no one here is doubting the virus or saying it doesn't exist or saying this is all a fraud. What we're encouraging our residents and everybody to do is to do the smart things. Wear face masks, promote social distancing, do not gather in big groups outside of your family. Let's just do what we need to do now so we can return to a strong economy and get our schools open and have normal day-to-day activities. So there's no objection to that statement. Just like to put that on the record, just to assure everyone that we're not a bunch of COVID doubters. We're all just interested in working together for the, for the greatest good here.
You're here.
Yep, thank you.
All right. So with that, that was item 16.1. We are moving on to the even more controversial 16.2, the conflict of interest code. So who- So who's got the, uh, staff report for this?
This is Stacy Lightner, city clerk, I have the staff report for this item. So, um, with this particular item, local agencies must review their conflict of interest code every two years to ensure that the code still accurately designates the appropriate positions and requires disclosure by designated officials in the appropriate disclosure category. The Political Reform Act requires that all positions that make or participate in making governmental decisions, um, be designated. So the positions and changes that we have identified were presented in the council packet as attachments and staff asked for the adoption of the resolution, which will result in the city's compliance with Fair Political Practices Commission requirements and will ask that those, um, who are identified complete the Form seven hundred annually. As many of you know, the city council, city manager, city attorney and, um, our CFO are not, um, covered under the code but are mandated filers, uh, and are required, under Government Code, Section eighty-seven-two-hundred, to file these. But these are for those that we, the city, choose to designate and again, we ask for you to adopt the resolution, um, regarding the positions that we've identified.
All right. Are there any speaker cards for this item?
There is not.
I'll move the item.
Any council comments or questions?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, was that a second from Gatewood?
That was.
All right.
And Linda did second. You can give it to Linda.
The second, second.
Terry, get in there with the second, that's how you do it, you gotta get a second from you.
You gotta jump quick.
You gotta go fast, we're looking at you for the next second, we're gonna wait for you.
Okay, so.
All right, so we got a motion.
Who, who was the motion?
By Gatewood.
Thank you.
Terry.
Terry and Gatewood.
And the second was?
Roll call, please.
Sorry, the second was?
Gatewood.
Okay.
Gatewood.
Me, Garrett.
Thank you. Uh, roll call, we have-
Roll call.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Pulapati?
Yes.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gatewood?
Yep.
Mayor Sander?
Aye.
Thank you.
Oh, that, that was a tough one, I don't know if we're gonna get through it or not. Okay. Next up, sixteen point three, legislative update. The top California laws of concern to the Rancho Cordova City Council. So, we have a presentation on this?
So, are we gonna, are we gonna have to, um, are we gonna have to move to go on beyond eleven o'clock because the list is so lengthy?
Um, and it's quite to the contrary.
It's not that long.
We have distilled it down a lot and, uh, I hope that we have, uh, Trevor Tanaguchi from my office on the line as well. Trevor, are you, are you with us?
I'm moving him over, Adam.
Thank you, thank you very much, Stacy. Um, so I will, uh, all, my Trevor's, uh, doing some of our slides in the second half, uh, of the presentation. So I'll, I'll start kicking off to the, in response to your question, um, actually, twenty twenty was a very modest year for the California Legislature and because of COVID nineteen. And again, our office, uh, focuses on a review of the laws that are adopted by the state of California. We leave to our federal legis-, uh, our federal lobbyists and, and team, a discussion of the federal laws that are, uh, are, have changed. And first, I know you could go to the next slide. And, and, um, we also try to focus in our discussion with the council on the issues that really involve policy questions and/or more major organizational issues that staff and the leadership, uh, and will need to wrestle with. We have significant conversations with staff about more minor, uh, day-to-day or, um, mechanical, um, uh, compliance issues that they need to address that, that are also going into effect at the, at the new year. Um, we appreciate the work of the League of California Cities in, in providing a foundation for this briefing and we try to focus in selecting bills on things that we've heard the council really focus on, um, and the community focus its attention on, and-
You mean Cal cities, right, Adam?
Cal cities, yes, Cal cities. Um, we're gonna have to work a little bit to-
That's gonna be some work.
Exactly, twenty, twenty-plus years in the brain, it may take more than a couple hours to pull it out of my brain. Um, so w- we again, we, you know, look forward to talking with the department heads and helping them comply with a larger set of laws. But, um, there were, uh, only a fraction of the number of bills passed this year overall. Um, and we've distilled that list of, of, um, uh, down to about ten that we think you should really know about and think about. And, and in many cases, these reflect broader policy changes, broader directions, um, and focuses of, of the state legislature that you're well aware of. Um, I'll start with the next slide with, um, discussion of the shelter crisis declarations. Next slide. AB, uh, two-five-five-three expands one of the tools that some cities have used to address, um, homeless and housing crises in their cities. Um, it allows homeless facilities that are designated as emergency housing for the duration of the crisis to be used as, uh, housing for the duration of the crisis and, um, suspends local housing and health and safety standards. And so, um, it, it, it means that you can have more flexibility with the kinds of shelter into which, um, you can, um, house homeless individuals on an emergency basis if you make a declaration that there is a shelter crisis. And, um, it expanded the, the scope of agencies and the, the number of agencies that could, could use that authority. And it is authority that some, some agencies around the state have used. It is a, uh, um, there are pros and cons of such a declaration, but it has been used by some agencies to, to allow, um, more diverse types of emergency shelter. Um, and one of the changes that it has been made to it this year is it does include one of the issues, um, a, a subject that's, that's come up in the city of Rancho Cordova recently is there's been a proliferation of, of, it appears, um, homeless in, in cars, homeless in vehicles. We've had a bit of a proliferation of that and interestingly, the state seems to be headed, um, potentially in, in the opposite direction of the one where we might have been focused a bit on a concern with, with, um, limiting or pulling back from, um, from, from parking in vehicles and, and enforcing it. They seem to be focusing in some places on creating safe parking, a safe parking program to actually, um, support or enable that. So that, that's a subject that, that we're looking, you know, gonna need to look quite closely at. But, um, I would say that we have, just as a, as a matter of addressing some of the homeless and code enforcement issues, identified some real concerns with the impact of, of parking, um, vehicles for people who do not have other shelter on those neighborhoods where they're being parked right now. Um, next slide. Um, another subject, the, that was the subject that the council focused considerable attention on at the outset of the COVID nineteen, um, pandemic is on, on COVID nineteen-related evictions. And again, there's this moratorium prohibition on evictions for non-payment of rent due to COVID nineteen and that's, um, extending well, well into January, into twenty-twenty-one. And, um, and it, it will only allow landlords to start suing for unpaid COVID nineteen rent beginning March first, twenty-twenty-one. And I think I would just say that, um, that this is now a potentially controversial subject depending, um, in, in a bit of a policy issue in some places because clearly for landlords, um, it's a very long time to potentially not be collecting rent. Um, but on the other hand, there's obviously very significant issues with, um, with evicting tenants who are suffering as a result of, of COVID nineteen. So I think we would, rather than trying to, um, do anything to suggest how you might resolve these, um, complex policy issues, really just to, to flag for you that it's likely that the council will be confronted with, um, some issues around whether or not to extend this and/or, or pull back from it in the future. Um, as, as both sides have increasingly strong views on this topic because of the, the length of the, the, uh, the moratorium on eviction.
Hey, Adam?
Yes.
Um, what about the building the safe spaces for people to take their vehicles? Is that like, uh, would, would that be like if we said like you could go to Mather Air Force Base and some of that open parking, that that would be a better spot for you to go? And they're, they're, they'd be approving that or how's that work?
Um, thank you for the question. So, um, if you make a declaration, uh, that there is a shelter crisis, um, which we have not done, but if, if the city were to declare that there is a, a home, a, a housing shelter crisis, um, one of the things, one of the, the parts, uh, that we would now have to look at is allowing, um, allowing shelter by having, allowing people to park in city-owned or leased parking lots. So, and use them essentially as emergency, using those parking spaces and people in their own cars as a form of emergency local shelter. So, yeah, so, yeah, uh-
Or go ahead and finish, I, I just, I have to this.
Answering his question, so, so a city-owned or city-leased parking lot, um, again, you know, we're sort of a couple steps removed from, from that issue. But, but, so, so if we declared a shelter crisis, then we would need to have some, um, some program, this safe parking program, to look at the possibility that we would allow, allow homeless individuals who have vehicles to use some city parking spaces or city-controlled lots. Does that answer the question, Mr. Gatewood?
Well, I know this is becoming a really big issue because over by, in the Anatoli area, people are starting to park their RVs and they're living out of them. And I know that we have like, what, I think it's like a hundred or two hundred, uh, families that I think are in the Rancho Cordova, full school or school that are driving around. It would be a good time for us to, so we would have to declare it and then go rent some space for them to go to? And then, can I surround it with services? I mean, I, I, Donald and I talked about this idea a long time ago, that we could find a space for them to actually go to instead of having it like throughout our neighborhood.
Garrett, so there's, there's two things here that, so first, Adam, we have declared a shelter emergency in the past. I don't know if it's already expired, but we did declare one once. Um, and it, it allowed us to potentially access additional funding that the state was gonna have that year. I want to say it was end of last year, the end of eighteen, but I, I can't remember exactly. But we have declared it once. Garrett, your point, th- this law, if we were to, to declare it as the declaring jurisdiction, would then basically allow these individuals to park, yes, in city-owned or city-leased parking. So city hall, neighborhood services, the police station, those are pretty much the only things that we have at the moment.
No, it's, it's, it's not all parking lots, it's, you would designate services potentially.
Right, but the, but it's only the ones that we own or we are currently leasing. So it, yes, Garrett, and to your point, we have to go come up with a lease agreement, in your case of where you're suggesting, county-owned land.
Well, yeah, and it's so open and, and, and there's nothing being used for it right now and it'd be great to get those, those poor individuals that are just in dire straits into a, you know, a place we could actually help them and get them out of our, you know, out of the backyards and stuff of people in the neighborhood.
Yeah, I mean, we've seen examples of this in, in Austin and other places like that where they, they've tried to do it. Um, I mean, I sort of sold that that, that the place you just suggested, um, is the place to do it, but, you know, it's, it's one solution, but it's, it's more complicated than just declare and then put them over there. Um, 'cause you also gotta get them to buy into it and that it's safe and, you know, but there are, and there are other things going on around, um.
Right, have you seen it work? Have you seen a place where it's working and I could go visit?
Um, I honestly, I think this is a really good discussion to have around maybe a bigger conversation with our navigators and what are the, the, the more effective strategies behind this? 'Cause like, to my, to, to focusing on this is like the BB gun at the freight train is the example I was, they, they like, solving for homelessness and solving for COVID is not do this and it'll, and like, this is something to try along with a lot of other things, which include building more affordable housing, right? Because ultimately shelters are just, and, and even this is just moving people around, right? And that doesn't solve the problem, so.
Right, I'm just really concerned about the, you know, like, we have more and more families growing up on, or, or setting up house on, I think it, what's that road down Sunrise over on the right? They're like starting to-
Yeah, I know what you're talking about, I've been seeing that a lot, I don't, I don't know the name of that street, it's, um.
And that now becomes the space where everyone could start setting up their housing and, or just not housing, but their cars every night? And I just feel like-
Yeah.
-unsafely and, and I'd really, this is one of those things, like, I, I know a lot of families or I've met a lot of families various things they do, they live out of their cars and I just, they, they always want a safe spot to land. And if we could provide that, even, even if I could rent the land from the county, it's worth it not to have the people driving and parking throughout the neighborhoods of, of Rancho. But anyways, I, I'm sorry, I'll, I'll be quiet.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think it's a good discussion for a, a broader conversation around shelters and homelessness in general.
And I, I think we will be, um, coming back to you on the housing element or other conversations that would potentially provide a, a place to talk about that.
More thing, and I promise.
Can I, can I answer your one other question?
Yeah, one, one other thing, um, is there any money in it? Did they talk about possibly giving us any money to help us with this?
Um, uh, on the Shelter Prices Act expansion, it wasn't specifically budgetary, it might be, um, there might, I think there's additional money in the budget stuff, uh, in the Budget Act, uh, that we talk about later on for homelessness related services. And just in, in, you asked another question of when you declare a shelter crisis and you have these sorts of emergency shelter or emergency facilities, are they often, do they, do they often include some consolidation of services? Be they Porta Potties or, or other sorts of things?
Yeah.
And the answer, um, they, they can and, and sometimes do, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, Garrett, I, I think that, and David, correct me if I'm wrong, 'cause I did, it's been a long time now, but the Governor's State of the State Address in January of this year was essentially an hour and a half speech about homelessness and affordable housing and how the state budget was going to completely transform affordable housing and homeless services and shelters and everything. Um, and that was, that was like what was gonna happen this year. And so a lot of these policy ideas, they made it through the legislature, just none of the money made it, 'cause there isn't any.
There's a, we have an upcoming slide about the, um, eight hundred million dollars on homeless coordination and financing and homeless shelter and housing solutions.
Yeah, but they, they were talking billions and billions at one point and they, they, they couldn't be nearly as aspirational as they wanted to be.
So I'm, um, I'm ready to move on to the next slide if, if you all are.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. So obviously, uh, another subject, um, next slide, please, that got, that got a lot of attention in Cali- ex- excuse me? Was there a question?
I think I heard some background noise from somewhere. Go ahead, Adam.
Um, obviously, a, another subject that got tremendous attention in the last year, both nationally and in California, was, uh, the use of force by, uh, police departments, particularly, um, against and, and with minorities and, um, the state- particularly um, against and and with um, minorities and um, the state.
Enter your participant ID followed by pound. You have joined the meeting as an attendee and will be muted throughout the meeting.
Can you all hear me fine?
Yes, you're good.
Okay.
Yeah, I hear you fine.
I got a pocket dial from the city manager that made me think I had been disconnected. Um, um, that uh, another was the uh, uh, AB fifteen oh six, the Attorney General um, is required to investigate incidents of officer involved shooting that result in the death of a person who is not in possession of a deadly weapon. Again, just an example of uh, a number of different state actions where states are getting more involved in these use of force um, incidents in different situations and uh, also implementing a police practices division. Um, uh, was there anything that the city manager might want to add on that in the absence of the chief? The uh, the comment I made about the RCPD working on this issue was one that I spoke to her about this um, and what she would want me to share with the council on that topic. Is there anything you might want to add, um, Cyrus, on this on this topic?
No, I there's really nothing specific. I just want to point out that uh, the new policies, new policies.
Um, then, uh, moving on, Trevor Tanaguchi from my office will take over. If you could go ahead, two slides to Proposition nineteen, Persephone. Trevor, are you on the line?
I am. Good evening, Council Mayor Trevor Tanaguchi from the City Attorney's Office. Um, Proposition nineteen passed during the this previous presidential election. It is a significant change to California property tax law. Um, specifically it allows an owner of a primary residence fifty five or over or severely disabled or a victim of a wildfire or other dangerous disaster.
The host would like you to unmute your microphone.
Is eligible to transfer their prop, you know, formerly Prop. thirteen tax base to a replacement primary residence located anywhere in the state. Um, previously, the standard was there were certain counties that would allow you to transfer um, your property tax base if you were above a certain age. This is really a significant change in the context of California property tax laws. Um, consistently in the past history, Proposition thirteen has been pretty much a state stronghold as far as California property tax. So it is a significant change. We're unclear in how it may affect um, city and county's local revenue streams. Um, that's still to be determined and seen in the future. A significant change also is dealing with the ability to transfer a family home at the time of death. This deals with from a parent to child or from a grandparent to grandchild relationship. Um, previously, there were some significant tax exemptions that would apply to a transfer of property at the time of death whereby the person, the beneficiary of that transfer was eligible to maintain the former property tax base, um, subject to certain specific circumstances that those restrictions no longer apply or those tax breaks no longer apply. Any questions on Proposition nineteen? All right, next slide. So the Budget Act of twenty twenty um, is a much pared down budget bill that was anticipated, obviously due to COVID nineteen and the impacts of impacts of the economy. We pulled out some significant items we thought would be of most interest to the council and members of the public in the city. There is specific coronavirus aid um, allocated money to the tune of two hundred and seventy five million dollars, and that specifically with cities with population um, less than three hundred thousand. There is a provision stating that no cities should receive less than fifty thousand. Um, this may answer part of Councilmember Gaywood's previous question regarding homeless funding, um, three hundred million, and I think Councilmember Tany pointed this out, is a significantly decreased number than what was projected at the beginning of the year or um, somewhat aspired to by Governor Newsom in regards to state funding of local homeless efforts. So three hundred million has been allocated for the Homeless Coordinating and Financing Council and five hundred million for homeless housing solutions. The breakdown of that spending, um, we haven't seen that specifically yet, so that would maybe be a future update for council if that's a, if there's, it sounded like there's an interest to learn more about potential funding options for the city to pursue in regards to homeless solutions or homeless housing solutions in that regard. Next slide. So SB thirteen eighty-three, it extends the California Family Rights Act to apply to employers who employ five or more employees. It extends benefits that were previously available to larger um, employers to employees of smaller businesses and it gives up to twelve work weeks of leave of that is unpaid within a twelve month period to provide for care for themselves, a newborn child, um, a parent, grandparent, grandchild, sibling spouse, or domestic partner. It also added a new provision to where if both uh, parents or spouse spouses work or uh, an employee and their spouse work for the same employee employer, they're both entitled to utilize each uh, twelve work weeks of unpaid leave. Next slide.
Um, another labor law that was passed uh, uh, affects just exactly how employers have to respond to um, to outbreaks and exposures to COVID nineteen. It it uh, adopts a number of specific standards on and steps that that the city and other employers have to take uh, within a day. It also identifies an outbreak of COVID, meaning um, um, multiple individuals getting it within a s- a short period of time. Um, that there's an OSHA, Cal OSHA like reporting requirement and and uh, that would become the subject of a of a report to the county public health official. Um, there are a couple of different conflicting standards in different parts of the law, interestingly, about what would constitute an outbreak. Um, so, you know, needless to say, this is an area where as as so many of us work to continue to keep City Hall safe, and it's been extremely safe, um, that we we have a whole bunch of new laws like this to comply with and um, to use, that we will continue to comply with to make sure employees have the notifications and informations that they need in City Hall and our other facilities. Next slide.
So these last two bills deal with governance and transparency, transparency, excuse me, specifically the Brown Act. SB nine seventy moves the statewide election in non-presidential years, so the next one would be the next general like, or excuse me, gubernatorial election in twenty twenty-two to June from March. This was due in large part to a delay in receiving or an anticipated delay in receiving census data and um, the California Redistricting Commission not believing it would have ample enough ample time to conduct all their necessary work by a March uh, general election date. So that date and even number of years um, will be uh, in June and, excuse me, a non-presidential even number of years, the election will be moved from March to June. Uh, AB nine nine two deals with council members and public officials generally's use of social media. This is based upon, um, this was a Cal Cities backed bill um, in which it was clarifying what was thought to be a gray area amongst council members' use of social media and whether there was an ability of council members or public officials generally to be able to answer questions of member of the public directly um, through social media, uh, provide information. So what this bill does is clarify that, yes, public officials, including council members, are able to use their social media platforms to answer member, answer questions from the public, provide information to members of the public, and also solicit information from the public, even if that soliciting information regarding a specific matter that may be within the jurisdiction um, that they are overseeing. The the caveat there is that a majority of the council members cannot use the social media platform. So let's take, for instance, uh, a Facebook post by one council member and then a comment by another council member. Um, they can't, you can't join in in a conversation in that comics section amongst the majority of the members that would still constitute a Brown Act violation. So so long as individual council members are responding to questions from the public, providing information to the public, or soliciting information from the public, um, which I think to a certain extent would include sharing another post from a council member, those are now all explicitly permitted under AB nine nine two.
Uh, last slide. So uh, what to expect in uh, twenty twenty-one and one quick reminder, uh, among the bills that stalled were bills on wildfire funding, housing, and additional police reform. Uh, the Cal Cities and others expect um, action on those topics. And a reminder that a bill that was passed uh, actually two years ago in twenty nineteen, AB five seventy-one goes into effect uh, at the beginning of of this coming year uh, of twenty twenty-one. And it would, absent a city adopting its own campaign limits, it would now set the individual contributions from single contributors um, to match the limit that is on members of the state assembly. And it's uh, three thousand dollars, but it's been adjusted upward from the FPPC, I believe, to uh, approximately forty nine hundred. Um, so what this would mean is that if the city, unless the city chose to give direction um, to to enact its own limitations, that in future elections, there would be this, there would be a limit on how much individual council members could collect, could could raise from individual individual donors.
Adam, well, do we need to act before January first to set our own standards or could we act thereafter?
That was exactly my question.
I think I think um, the 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 law is, in in my opinion, a little bit unclear. Um, I think that if you if you wanted to give clear direction that you didn't want to have a limit, I would say, let's go ahead and it, you can adopt this by resolution. So I would say, let's go ahead and get a resolution on the next council meeting. Um, um, uh, I think the law is intended to allow you to do it uh, to to do it later. Um, but if you, if the council had a strong opinion that it wanted to be able to consider this, um, and an abundance of caution, I would say, let's go ahead and do it quickly. Um, but I think you, you know, it looks like a number of jurisdictions are still considering doing it later.
Yeah, my two cents with this one, um, I I, when I look at especially smaller local uh, elected bodies that don't tend to raise the hundreds of thousands of dollars at um, a city of Sacramento or LA or even LA Unified, you know, school district, you know, can cost me a four hundred, it can be a four hundred thousand dollar or more campaign. Um, contribution limits make it harder for challengers to beat incumbents. I mean, this is the first time we've had a, you know, a challenger get sworn in and have, you know, vested in incumbent in the city's history. Um, but that's what contribution limits tend to do, and it also tends to invite in independent expenditures. And you don't have to look any further than the County Board of Supervisors here that has a a woefully underfunded campaign limit um, that really makes it a handful of other organizations um, heavily swaying those elections. Um, so i- if the limit's forty nine hundred, though, that's a little different than three grand, in my opinion, right now. Um, so I'm trying to understand what what changed from what I understood of this law to now, but I I would tend to want to err on the side of caution to adopt our own, keeping it the same or keeping some other limit and maybe even revisiting it later in the year. Um, but, you know, the the cities and communities around here with 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 very small and and I mean, thi- this is not the same thing, but, you know, cities like Folsom and West Sack and some other places, they're just inviting independent expenditures to come in and and really sway their elections because, you know, when you're raising hundreds of dollars, and in this case, three thousand dollars over four years from from one, um, you know, that that's a lot different than it is today. Um, but contribution limits in general, to me, tend to, tend to bring out folks that, you know, if if that one vote doesn't go well on on their development, you know, or, you know, if you don't vote for their gas station like somebody did in in the city of Sacramento and then there's a developer that says, I got two hundred thousand, I was going against that person. You know, those are the types of things that tend, that I see tend to happen when you when you have contribution limits.
So two questions. Um, the first question is uh, interpretation of this sentence here. For election from any single person, is that a person or an organization or an entity? Adam?
Um, so I, um, let me just get to the 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 sentence in the law.
I was gonna say, when it, for for the way it works for assembly races, it's an individual, but there there, I thought there was a different limit for uh, an organization or like a pack.
And there has been historically. So what do you, what'd you find, Adam?
Um, a person, um, a, from a person, uh, contribution accepting more than more than the amount um, set forth for a statewide elective office. But it just says you you shall not accept from a person a contribution totally more than the amount set forth um, in subdivision A, which is the amount set forth for a statewide elective office.
Okay, because because it's, there's usually been a distinction between an individual, a couple, and an organization. So that would be a good question.
Okay.
Um, secondly, if, um, because I I agree with Donald, I'd rather, this is kind of like local controls again, so I'd rather that we um, adopt something um, at our next meeting, but if we adopt something now, uh, based on your earlier uh, indication of what other people seem to be doing, does that mean we can change it later on? Or does whatever we are, we would adopt in December commit us to something?
Uh, I don't think it commits you to to forever, no.
Yeah, I I I, I, I tend to agree with it, but like, if we adopted the status quo from now and then figured it out over the next month or two, um, I'd be much more comfortable with that because I I'm guessing I'm still the person that's raised more money than most when it comes to to these council races. But, you know, we we had a very competitive race this time and, you know, if this is the limit and it's and it's held to this, I mean, that amount of money in an assembly race across a much bigger area, you know, in getting your message out and how and how expensive that can be, you know, it it really ends up, you know, is there some organization out there that decides that they want to spend six figures and then you have incumbents or even challengers that really just can't compete with, you know, a big, you know, pocketed, you know, person that's frustrated or, you know, wants to send the council and the city in a certain direction? Um, and and, yeah, so that that that's just really my apprehension here and I, three thousand may be the right number. I have no, I I don't know, but um, when I, when I became aware of this kind of during the election, um, the timing and the amount of time that we were gonna have to actually do something was was very limited.
So if I may just give you one one other sub-bullet on this is that um, if if a city adopts its own standards and adopts its own number, then the commission is no longer responsible for administering and enforcing it, which means that um, unless you hire them separately to do the administration and enforcement. And um, they are doing that under, it's either a very politically complicated service for um, staff to do internally, or it's one that the commission is charging. and contracting in a way that some agencies aren't happy with. So I think I would just need to probably give you a little bit of information. There was an extremely critical, um, e- email exchange about, um, a, a well-respected local jurisdiction that was struggling with that, that contract. So enforcement becomes something to think about as well, if you choose to, well, adopt your own standard as well and sharing with you.
Yeah, and I would just share that, my experience with West Sacramento, who has some very unique ones, they end up in, in front of judges a lot to enforce this stuff.
So where, whereas if you do it, if you do the state standard, if you do the state standard, you're, you've already essentially, you're, you're not paying an extra cost. So, um, but I guess.
But, but Adam, to that point, we would have the option in February to just adopt the state standard and, and the FPPC would, would manage that, correct?
I think you could change your policy choice, yes.
Okay, okay.
So, so would the council like us to bring you back something in the next agenda for you to consider?
I would.
I would.
I think so, yeah. The whole principle of local control, just automatically, you're like, whoa.
Yeah.
Before the city starts telling you it's time to do something.
Well, David, I mean, just, just think of it this way, right? Like, and forget the media markets or whatever, we're gonna have the same standard limit that San Francisco and LA and San Diego and Fresno and GALT potentially could have. I think GALT actually is a ninety-nine dollar limit. But, but in theory, in theory, like, to paint a broad brush here with us without any kind of studying, to me, yeah, it just seems ridiculous that, that, and again, I'm not saying I'm opposed to this limit. I just, I've heard interpretations that it's three thousand from a single source in a given year, but then actually, no, it's really a, in a four-year cycle is what that, that is coming from. So I, I'd wanna study it a little bit more before we decide, so.
Then, yeah, for the city manager, would you like us to ask the council to tell us a number tonight? Or perhaps to ask, um, an individual council member to work with us on potentially coming up with a number? Or do you want to have no number and no limit in your first?
You're gonna, Adam, I can guarantee you, you're gonna get at least three numbers, three totally different numbers.
I, 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 I thought actually with, between the five of you, I thought I'd get seven or eight different numbers.
I, I would say leave it the way it is. And I, and I'm gonna say out loud, I am not gonna vote to keep it unlimited next year. But keep it there for now and then let's adopt something.
I would, and I would put, I would set it at five thousand.
That, that, honestly, if it says forty-nine hundred already, we may not have to do anything, Linda. But I haven't seen anything that says forty-nine hundred yet.
It's, it's three, but, um, Stacy, do you have the, uh, the, the letter from the FPPC? It's, it escalates from the FPPC, so I, I think that.
So if, if we can have that presented next week, or, or two weeks from now, and then maybe, maybe we'll change it on the fly there. But I say bring it back for a resolution and let's decide if we want to adopt something.
Okay, we'll give you both options.
Bring it back with a blank line.
We'll, we'll give you both.
Yeah, 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 right. And then we'll put something in there.
Insert number here.
Yeah.
Stacy or, or for the city clerk or city manager, anything to add to this conversation?
No, I think, I think we're clear.
Okay. Um, and, uh, that, uh, that, that.
Can I, can I just ask, Siri, Garrett, do either of you have a opinion on this?
I was gonna say that I ran my campaign on a shoestring budget. And, um, if you have the right platform, it's gonna work. But I agree with you, Donald, that we should discuss this, I mean, leave, for today, leave it as it is. You know, go huddle and come back with another number.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Twelve dollars.
Uh, th- thank you. I, 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 we, we will probably have a tougher choice next year picking which, um, ten bills to talk to you about, because hopefully the legislature will be back in, in more like full swing.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Nothing says a weird year like, like swearing in at Golden One, at the Golden One Center.
Hey, uh, um, Adam, have you heard anything about, about us trying to? Adam, have you heard anything about legislation about us try, trying to get ourselves the vaccine for our people, uh, our, what are they called, the emergency services people early? Did they have anything, uh, uh, I think if you were listening, I thought something came out about that.
Cyrus? I've been, I have been trying to monitor, um, um, that topic and, and whether or not they would identify certain categories of essential or government workers, and where, where folks would be in, in the queue. But Cyrus, I have not heard any specific state law on that topic. Have you?
No, not yet. I think I do hear, uh, some discussions about, uh, first priority being healthcare, providers or health, he- healthcare workers, followed by, uh, senior care facilities. And beyond that, I have not heard any specifics.
Well, I'm wondering, because we, we're building the drug in our city, if we could get somehow on the list to get it to our first responders first. You know what I'm saying, Cyrus? Phone call?
Yeah, in, in, in general, we don't employ, and when, when it comes to healthcare first responders, we don't employ anybody that would fit that mold. And I know, I've heard people that, that, that claim that, you know, employees at my bank, because it's an essential business, that they would be prioritized. At this point, nothing has been addressed beyond hospital workers and, and, uh, nursing facilities and the residents in those nursing facilities. Beyond that, I don't think there's been any definition. David, I don't know if you've read more than I have, but.
Yeah, I think the next step is, uh, senior citizens in general and people with, um, compromising conditions, health conditions.
Yeah, yeah, so we're.
And after that, it's gonna be just sort of whoever signs up with their health plan to get it whenever it's about.
Yeah, I mean, the lobby I heard around like firefighters has been to try to get them on the list. They're not even on the list. So when, when we bring up essential workers, the closest thing you get would be police officers, and they haven't even been addressed. But neither have firefighters or paramedics, for that matter.
Yeah, they've done, they've done.
And any way you look at it.
Know what professions are most likely to get it. And healthcare workers have an increased risk. But when you get past that, the, it's hard to see where the increased risk actually is in the population.
And any way you look at it, this, after, depending on which newspaper you're reading and which talking head you're listening to, everybody has a different, uh, take on the subject. Your opinions out there are enormous.
Teachers wanted to be first in line, firefighters wanted to be first in line.
Absolutely.
But the num- there are numbers really that support that, so.
Any chance Rancho can be first in line?
What was that?
Any chance the city of Rancho can be first in line?
Probably not. Though the state, the state's gonna get the allocation and decide. And the rules you've just heard are, are what they've coming up with.
So no, no, I, I think that we're, we're somewhat off topic if there's no, no, no new law on that subject.
All right.
Yeah, yeah.
Item sixteen point.
Sorry, I digress.
That was item sixteen point three. We are moving on to item sixteen point four, and this is our meeting schedule for twenty twenty-one.
Are we meeting again on, um, hang on, I'm just bringing it up. Are we meeting again on the same day as the national championship for college football?
We're meeting on the fourteenth of this month, which will not be the na- well, when is the national championship for college football this year?
I don't know. I'm pretty sure it's the.
Hold on, I'm looking it up right now.
It's not the fourth.
Well, besides, I don't think it concerns Notre Dame.
Oh, I was scared to you.
Oh, that was, ooh, ow, Linda, that's not fair.
Monday the eleventh, we are meeting on that day, huh?
Oh, that's great.
Linda. And we were friends.
I could go, I could go get my Bulldog parking fan and wave it in front of the camera.
No, I don't think we're meeting on that day. Or are we? I'm sure we're gonna be the eleventh, I see original transit meeting.
No, that is, uh, December.
Okay.
Any further discussion on the?
No, I'll move, I'll move to approve the.
There a second?
I had.
That calendar.
Oh, oh, I.
No, I would, no, I just had a conflict.
Was that a?
No, I said, no, I said I have a conflict on one of those days, Feb. first. I can't make that date.
Okay. Generally, don't move because of a single conflict like that?
I know, I'm just putting it out there.
No problem.
What, what tends to happen, Siri, is that if, if there's something really critical that, that really should have all five of us there, we tend to continue that to a date where everyone's gonna be there.
Right.
So, so if you're not there and there's something really critical that you wanna talk about, we tend to agree to move it to another.
We don't run over people because of absences like that.
Right.
Very collegial group. All right, uh, so I heard a motion and a second.
Oh, a second. I did, I did, I did.
All right, roll call, please.
Cyrus, write it down.
Council member, council member Pulopati.
Yes.
Council member Terry.
Hi.
Council member Budge.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Hi.
Mayor Sander.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to item sixteen point five, selection of twenty twenty-one mayor and vice mayor. I don't think we need a staff report on this. Uh, I doubt there are any speaker cards on this. Are there any?
No, there's not.
No one wishes to speak on that. All right, council. So we have our tradition. I'll just explain it, where we all, we all have a number, basically. And we just take turns and rotate around. Uh, when we have a new member join us, they kind of get in the back of the line and we continue on. We've done this for eighteen years. And it helps us, uh, for the public understanding, it helps us avoid conflicts that other jurisdictions have. Uh, it allows us to plan for years in advance. It doesn't allow any one person to monopolize being mayor or to become overly exhausted doing the job as mayor. And it keeps us from having three versus two fights that can reverberate for a year or more on neighboring city councils, and you see it all the time. So with that in mind, our normal tradition would be for Garrett to assume the role of mayor for next year and for Donald to assume the role of vice mayor for twenty twenty-one. And I see Donald has declined.
No.
What? No.
I'm, I'm, I'm laughing, I, I'm, I'm smiling at my colleague over here that's waving his arms around.
Oh, you shook your head no at Garrett being mayor. Now I see, okay. Okay.
I didn't hear.
So, uh, I will move that, that situation.
Hey, woo, tip of the rose.
Jumped on that one.
All right, and, and by the way, whoever is mayor, I wish you much more luck than I had in the luck of the draw this year, because all you guys owe me huge.
Hey, what better time to be a mayor than, you know, it's a virologist mayor. I think you're the only one in the country.
Yeah, it's the craziest, craziest year.
This was a good year for you, though, for, for you to be doing this.
It did kind of work out that way, I guess.
And more, more importantly, it was really great that I wasn't mayor or any of the rest of us. But ho- hopefully, hopefully twenty twenty-one is talking about recovery and building and a lot of other things. The one thing I'd obviously throw out there that, regardless of how people felt about measure R, the resources that we're going to have to be able to assist in rebuilding now that there is probably a vaccine on, on the horizon, the resources, I think, are gonna be really game-changing for us next year. So I look forward to working with all of you, and thank you, David, um, for the nomination. But, um, I look forward to working with all of you to try to rebuild what, what's been lost this year.
So I, I will obviously still be around for all your virus needs. I'm gonna be kind of happy not to be occupying that office right up, right up there.
Mayor Sander.
Not that I ever actually, you know how many meetings I held in that office right up there?
Zero.
Like, two.
One, one. That's it.
Who meets with anybody anymore?
Oh.
Mayor Sander, can we get a, can we get a roll call vote? We had a motion and a second, but, um, we went off on a tangent.
That's right, I guess we actually have to formalize this.
Yes, yes, we do that.
All right, roll call, please. Unless there's any further discussion.
Council.
Okay, go ahead.
Council member Pulopati.
Yes.
Council member Terry.
Hi.
Council member Budge.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Ha ha, yes.
Mayor Sander.
What have we done? Hi.
Ah, damn.
Congratulations to the new, me-appointed mayor, vice mayor.
Thank you.
Councilwoman. Lots of news.
Yes.
Yeah, I get to be in mayor, vice mayor meetings all year with that guy.
Yes.
I did the best I could, Donald. That was up to you.
It's all right, it's all right. Looking forward to working with all of you.
But by the way, I do seem to be like the official, like, breaker-inner of new council members. I don't know how that happened. But I tend to be mayor with their vice mayor the first time. It happened with you, Donald, right?
Uh, I was your vice mayor, right?
Yeah?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, sure.
So was Garrett, so was Dan.
Oh, and Dan, yeah?
I don't know why. And now Siri will be.
Yeah, uh, yeah.
I'm the trainer or something, I don't know. Okay, uh, we are moving on to council requests for future agenda items. And we already created a poll tonight, at least one, well, one at least.
Yeah, well, I think we need to talk about probably homeless services and ideas.
Yeah, I wanna talk about, I wanna talk about that, that Donald and I went to, I don't know where, I think it was in Austin, Texas or something, and they were pushing that idea of the safe space for parking people's cars to get them out of neighborhoods. And it was a.
Yeah, well, Garrett, I, I, and obviously you and I are the ones that are gonna talk.
Can we, can we discuss that when we discuss it, not tonight?
Yeah, no, I'm just saying that, that we should have a, a broader discussion about homeless services in the boardroom.
Lovely idea.
Great.
You've got three votes.
My, yeah, my suggestion was gonna be very similar to that. It was gonna focus on mechanical drive, I think is what you guys were trying to, to make.
It is mechanical drive.
It is mechanical.
Mechanical drive, that situation is untenable. We got, we gotta find something to do there. The other scary situation for me right now is Highway fifty in Sunrise. She, uh, Southbound Sunrise on-ramp situation.
Well, they, uh, Caltrans committed to Steve Harriman that they would do something about that Friday, but I don't know that anything happened.
Many people, before our city attorney cuts us off, we can talk about all of this in a workshop.
Yeah, we need to, we need to have that. Get us all on the, uh, the same page. Also gives us a chance to talk with Siri about all the issues we've heard about for years that are new to her. On that topic, that are pretty critical.
I got hit by that crash when I was driving on fifty, before city, city, the city attorney said something.
Yeah, well, and there's a couple of votes coming up that I think are gonna need some briefings anyways for some folks.
All right.
That's it for me.
If there's something further, we are gonna adjourn tonight. Um, and we're gonna adjourn in memory of a couple of things. One, Pearl Harbor Day.
They're here.
Having occurred, and we have very few of those veterans left with us, but of course, we owe them a great deal having, uh, survived Pearl Harbor and, and led off our, uh, response to that horrific attack on our country um, many, many years ago now. Um, the second thing I would like to, to adjourn tonight in memory of is Chuck Yeager.
Yes.
Who, uh, apparently died today, first American.
Right.
To, uh, exceed the speed of sound.
Yep.
In a controlled craft, I guess.
Yeah.
In a controlled way. He was certainly an American hero. I'm gonna honor him tonight as well, so.
David, can I?
Yes, Donald, go ahead.
Laura McBride passed away, um, a few days ago over the weekend. Uh, she was my chief of staff in the Capitol for the, uh, Majority Leader, Kevin Shelley, and then also was a Deputy Secretary of State. Spent a lifetime champion LGBT rights and, and AIDS, um, services in San Francisco and throughout the state. She was a top advisor to Willie Brown. Um, she, uh, had a stroke about a month ago, was recovering, and then, uh, passed away over the weekend. So hopefully we can adjourn in the memory of Laura McBride as well.
Sure.
All right, if there's nothing further, we're adjourned.
Thanks, everyone. Have a very nice.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Siri.